Welcome, everybody. Happy October. Welcome to our first meeting of the month. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our esteemed clerk to read the adequate notice of compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 16, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left hand at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return thereafter.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Calmerson.
Here.
Mr. Blowski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
President McTiernan.
Present. All right, at this time, I'd like to call on firefighter Lemons to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channels 34 and 36, and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Saturdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the city clerk at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and for it all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion at this time to approve the regular enclosed session minutes of September 16, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Council President, just for the record, I'd emailed Rosie just one change in those minutes, one Scribner's error.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, we're on to our report section of our meeting, and we'll start as always with our esteemed mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I have a lot to say tonight. Sorry, I'll try to be quick. First, our bike rodeo series is underway. These events are a great opportunity for our kids to get their helmets checked and participate in an obstacle course while learning safe cycling. First one was today at the pool. It was fairly well attended, so that was great. And the next is on October 9 at 3:30 at Tatlock Park. Participants will also get ice cream. Speaking of bike safety, Officer David Cotiga and Lieutenant Tom Rich recently gave an e-bike safety presentation to all Summit middle schoolers, informing them of our city ordinance and how to ride safely. You'll also soon notice new signs downtown reminding cyclists, both traditional and motorized, to walk it, not ride it, on downtown sidewalks. Our city ordinance prohibits bicycles and scooters on sidewalks in the Central Business District and bans e-bikes and e-scooters on all sidewalks citywide. These rules are in place to keep our pedestrians safe. If you missed our live Q and A on e-bike safety, you can watch it anytime on the City of Summit YouTube channel or our Facebook page. And I always say, America runs on Dunkin', but Summit runs on volunteers. We are currently accepting applications for city boards and commissions. If you're interested in volunteering and helping shape our community, please visit cityofsummit.org/volunteer to learn more and apply. Our popular haunted hike is back this weekend at Martins Brook Park. Join us for two nights of spooky fun Friday and Saturday. From 6 to 7, we'll have a less spooky trail, perfect for younger kids, and from 7 to 8, we'll turn up the fright with our super spooky trail, which is still family-friendly and fun for all ages. And hopefully, there will be no bears this year. It's a wonderful annual Summit tradition, and we hope to see everyone there. And don't forget to register to vote if you haven't already. The deadline to register to vote in the November 4 general election is next Tuesday, October 14. The City of Summit Clerk's Office will be open until 9:00 PM on October 14 for voter registration. Also, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and as a physician, I'd just like to remind everyone to keep up with their checkups. And finally, I didn't get to do this at the last meeting, and it hadn't come to fruition yet, so I wanted to offer my sincere congratulations to Lieutenant Mike Byrne on his retirement, and thank him for his 29 years of dedicated service with the Summit Police Department. We miss him already, and we wish him well in his new chapter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we're on to our city administrator report. Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you, Council President. I do have a few community updates tonight to share with all of you. First of all, the Summit Free Market is coming up on Saturday, October 11, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the transfer station. This is a great opportunity to give unwanted items a second life and pick up something new to you, all for free. So please go ahead and do that. Remember that a valid transfer station permit is required to enter. Speaking of permits, all current Summit resident transfer station and parking permits expire on October 31 of this year. Online registration is now open, and new permits will be valid from November 1 through October 31 of 2026. These permits are required for residents who park in long-term municipal lots and garages, or who use the municipal transfer station at 40 New Providence Avenue. Registered permit holders with an existing online account can renew their permits at cityofsummit.org-permitrenewal. There are step-by-step instructions available in the Help section of the online portal for anyone who needs assistance. This is also Fire Prevention Week, and our Summit Fire Department is reminding everyone to keep an eye on your rechargeable batteries. Damaged lithium ion batteries can explode when damaged or old. These batteries are in everything that's rechargeable, from your phone to power tools to e-bikes and tablets. Dispose of them properly if damaged. Check out our Facebook page for an informative video on what to look out for and how to dispose of them properly. A reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday, October 13 in observance of Columbus Day. That is also a parking holiday, which means parking fees will not be required for on-street parking or in municipal lots and garages. However, short-term time limits will still be enforced, so please keep an eye on the posted signs. Finally, Mayor Fagan and I had the pleasure of meeting with visitors from India and Romania this week, who were in Summit with Beacon Church. They asked thoughtful questions about how our local government operates. It was a great opportunity to share It was a great opportunity to share more about how Summit serves its residents. They took a tour of our facilities, and we discussed back and forth how government and things work in their respective countries, and it was very interesting, so that was a lot of fun. And that concludes my report.
It's awesome. Thank you. International outreach, it's great. All right, so my council president's report, I wanted to give everybody an update on our Mount Laurel Round Four. I guess we had a mediation session a week ago from yesterday. These are all, for people who have been following, this is all part of the process to get our Round Four plan approved. For those who haven't been following, and I know there are a lot of people out there who have no idea what I'm talking about, which is a little scary, because it could have a big effect on our town, but we are, our next 10-year plan to provide affordable housing inside Summit, the legislation was created last year, and we are going through the guidelines to make that happen. There's a lot of question marks around it, because the way the law was written, some of the numbers are unclear on how they're going to all pan out, but part of the process was, we would file a plan, which we did on June 30th. This council approved it. It continues our builder remedey lawsuit immunity that we have, which is super, super important. And then we began this process of challenges to our plan that was written into the litigation. We had two developers who challenged our plan, one of which would like to build 250 units down on River Road across from the Muni Golf Station, which is now the Wells Fargo Building, so they've challenged our plan. We have another developer who would like to build 300 units right where the Conoco Station is, which is Broad Street and Summit Avenue, right across from the Tier Garage and the, not the Tier Garage, the Broad Street Garage and the Village Green. Their proposal is an eight-story building, so let that sink in. That's what they're asking for. The process created by the legislature allows this to happen. We have no choice but to sit there and listen to their proposals, and we're now going through mediation. Our first mediation session, we did not come to any agreement with either of the developers. The plan is that we will have a follow-up mediation session, and we'll see where we go. You know, our position is, we stand by our Round Four plan, we think it's sound, we think that the numbers that we promoted make sense, we have some of the best planners and legal advice that we can offer, and that's how we're going into the negotiations. We've also been challenged by Fair Share Housing, which is a housing advocate. They challenged 400-odd municipalities throughout the state, and we're negotiating with them as well. So that's the update. I wish I could say more, but this is legalese stuff, but we should have another mediation session sometime before the end of the month. The way the legislation was set up, if we can't come to any mediation, we'll go before a court master with recommendations from the mediator and the presiding judge who sat in on the mediation, and then we'd have to debate our positions in front of a judge. And we'd see where that happens. So this process is going to pick up speed, and I would urge everybody to stay tuned, because it does have the possibility it could really, really impact our town if, you know, these developers get their way. Hopefully, they won't. Again, we're pretty confident in our numbers, but it is something to be aware of. And again, this is a process, it's dictated by legislation, and we're going through that process. And that is my report. Okey-dokey. All right, Madam Mayor, we have a proclamation this week, I understand.
We do indeed.
Chief Evers and Lieutenant Lemmons, thank you for joining us. All right. Whereas the City of Summit is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fires are a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries, and whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, an improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community, and whereas Summit Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach, and whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of Summit, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th to 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Summit to reduce fire risks in their homes by ensuring safe use of lithium-ion batteries and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of our Summit Fire Department. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed the 7th day of October in the year 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name's Lieutenant Matt Lemmons, I'm with the Summit Fire Department. From phones to power tools, Summit Fire Department urges residents to know the risk of lithium-ion batteries this Fire Prevention Week. The theme for Fire Prevention Week, October 5th to the 11th, 2025, is Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home. The Summit Fire Department is teaming up with the National Fire Protection Association, the official sponsor of Fire Prevention Week for more than 100 years, to promote this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home. It highlights how important it is to buy, charge, and recycle lithium-ion batteries safely. Most of the electronics that we use in our homes every day, smartphones, tablets, power and lawn tools, laptops, e-cigarettes, headphones, and toys, to just name a few, are powered by lithium-ion batteries. In fact, most everything that's rechargeable uses this type of battery. If not used correctly or if damaged, lithium-ion batteries can overheat, start a fire, or even explode. To reduce these risks, look around your home, it's important to know which devices are powered by these batteries. Lithium-ion batteries are powerful, convenient, and they're just about everywhere. This year's Fire Prevention Week campaign helps people understand the importance of using these batteries correctly to prevent fires in the home and to follow the buy, charge, and recycle safely approach. Buy only listed products. When buying a product that uses a lithium-ion battery, take time to research it. Look for a stamp from a nationally-recognized testing lab on the packaging and product, which means that it meets important safety standards. Many products sold online and in stores may not meet safety standards and could increase the risk of fire. Charge devices safely. Always use the cords that came with the product to charge it, follow the instructions from the manufacturer. If you need a new charger, buy one from the manufacturer or one that the manufacturer has approved. Charge your device on a hard surface, don't charge it under a pillow, on a bed, or a couch, this could cause a fire. Don't overcharge your device, unplug it, or remove the battery when it's fully charged. Recycle batteries responsibly. Don't throw lithium-ion batteries in the trash or recycle regular recycling bins, because they could catch fire. Recycling your device or battery at a safe and ready recycling location is the best way to dispose of them. Visit calto recycle.org to find a recycling spot near you. The Summit Fire Department encourages all residents to be aware of their devices, follow the buy, charge, and recycle safely approach, and support this year's Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety. To find out more about Fire Prevention Week programs and activities in Summit, please contact the Summit Fire Department at 908-277-9351, and for more information on Fire Prevention Week and lithium-ion battery safety, please visit fpw.org. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, that was a great public service announcement. At this time, we are up to our historical minute portion of our meeting. Councilman Pulowski, do you have a historical minute for us this meeting?
I do, thanks very much. Tonight, I'm going to present on our good friend Gilbert Einer Orin, we all knew him as Gil, who departed this life on September 24th. We could just have a quick moment of silence before I start. Gil was born in Plainfield on December 14th, 1940. He moved to Summit with his family at the age of eight or nine and matriculated through our public schools, attending Brayton Elementary, Summit Junior High, and Summit High School, graduating in the class of 1958. As a youngster, Gil spent most of his time at The Field, which most of you know as Memorial Field, playing football, baseball, and other sports. Sports were his first true love. But if you...
Back?
Yeah.
What?
I'll tell you one. But if you grew up in Summit before the turn of the century, we called Memorial The Field. Gil explained this at a council meeting last year, it was The Field, because it was the only sports field in town. A nine-letter winner in high school, Gil played varsity football, basketball, and baseball in each of his three years at Summit High School. He was among the inaugural class of the Summit High School Athletics Hall of Fame in 2014. His yearbook quote, which is up on the screen, says it all: Three-letter man, handsome, easy-going, solid build, sports and more sports. His classmates even voted him best-looking. Cartoon of him up there with his flat top. That's probably what first caught the attention of another of his true loves, his wife of 58 years, Fran, when they met at a parking meter on Union Place in 1966. There he is with Fran in his Summit football gear, I've got my Summit football tie on tonight in honor of Gil. Before that, Gil graduated from Millbury College in Vermont in 1962. He played football all four years, as well as freshman basketball and baseball as a sophomore and a junior. He was president of his fraternity, Sigma Phi Epsilon, as a senior. You may notice on there, it says he's living in Jackson, Tennessee. The family moved there for about a year, during which time they either took a train or drove to every one of his football games up in and around Vermont. Thereafter, Gil attended Seton Hall Law School and graduated in 1965 before joining the Marines, where he served as a JAG officer. Proud Marine like his father, he enthusiastically greeted fellow Marines with Semper Fi. In 1967, Gil opened Drummond &amp; Orin, where he practiced law for 57 years until retiring earlier this year, serving Summit residents as a general practitioner, first focusing on real estate and then trusts and estates. The highlight of his career was winning a case before the New Jersey Supreme Court in 1982, captioned Spewack and versus the Board of Education of Rutherford. For all you lawyers out there, the citation is 90 NJ 63. In that case, Connie Anderson, the wife of longtime, he represented Connie Anderson, the wife of longtime physical education teacher, football and baseball coach, and Summit High School Athletic Director, Howie Anderson. She was a teacher in Rutherford, who, along with some others, were wrongfully denied their earned pensions. Another highlight of his legal career must have been representing Summit High School football, basketball, and baseball phenom, Willie Wilson, who was also a member of the Summit High School Athletic Hall of Fame inaugural class in 2014. He did that as a young lawyer in contract negotiations with the Kansas City Royals, where Willie played 19 years and is a member of the Royals Hall of Fame. This was his one and only business trip, according to Fran, further demonstrating his dedication to his hometown.
Doesn't seem to get anywhere else. It's not moving forward.
Okay. Well, there was a picture that I was going to say, here he is at Super Bowl XXI with Howie and Connie up front, and Willie Wilson two to his left. He and Fran made Summit their home for 58 years, where they raised their children, Jenny and Eric. He was known as Pop to his grandchildren, Gilbert, Grace, Gus, Jake, and Avery. We all know from his many comments at council meetings what a great storyteller Gil was, and I hope I'm doing justice to him here tonight. Gil had a passion for youth sports, coaching all sports for his children, soccer, football, basketball, and baseball. He also coached football for the city for many years, founding the Suburban Football Conference for our youth football. There was a picture of him accepting the Stuart Reed Award, presented by the YMCA in 1981, for his service to Hilltopper youth. For years, Gil also scouted for the Summit High School football team as well. Along the way, he mentored so many of us as children and me as an adult when I decided to run for council. He always made himself available for good advice, and for that, we thank him sincerely. Always civic-minded, Gil was a fixture at council meetings in recent years, and as a building owner uptown, and Gil will tell you it's uptown, not downtown, in this city, he served with SDI, the Substandard Housing Board, and other civic organizations. Gil also spent a good deal of time looking after Andy Anderson, one of our special-needs residents you may have seen a gazillion times, walking around town. Gil drove him to away football games for decades and was the best man at Andy's wedding. If you ever wondered how you saw Andy walking as you left for a game and he still beat you there, now you know. A man of God, Gil was active in his church 50 years, central Presbyterian, larger-than-life. There was a photo of him emceeing an event in a Celebrate Summit t-shirt. What I will remember most about Gil is that his passion for Summit was contagious. Gil remains an inspiration to me and others I know to give back to the city that has given us all so much. Gil passed at Overlook Hospital in Summit on September 24th, surrounded by his loving family and listening to the classical music he so adored. Services and an SHS football celebration will be held at later dates, which will be announced on the Bradley Funeral Home Obituary page. Condolences may be shared with Gil's family by mail or through the www.bradleyfuneralhomes.com website. We'll miss you, Gil.
Thank you, Councilman Pulowski. I think we all will. He's a great man and a fixture in Summit, and I think our community is going to miss him as well. Okay. We're now on to our Ordinance for Hearing section of our meeting. We have three to get through today. So at this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the First Capital Projects and Community Service Ordinance 25-3356?
An ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, repealing Section 2-29 Historic Preservation Commission, other revised general ordinances of the City of Summit, and creating a new Part 5 Historic Preservation of Chapter 35 Development Regulations.
Thank you very much. Councilman Smallwood.
I think that's me.
Oh, you're going to do this one.
I am, yes.
Mr. Councilman Pulowski.
So, thank you. This is ordinance number 25-3356. I think a little history will be helpful in starting this hearing. This ordinance is a long time coming. Decades ago, the Historic Preservation, or HPC, expressed interest in a stronger ordinance than the one that we have. The HPC has always been an advisory board, and when a historic property owner wanted to do something that needed sign-off of the zoning board, it would refer the file to the HPC for a review. Now, the HPC wanted, at some point, the HPC decided they wanted a very strong ordinance, one that would allow the HPC to reject requests for certain demolitions and proposed renovations. That would... That would have required the HPC to become a judiciary board with a budget, open public meetings, and its own legal counsel. Under the prior common counsel, the city paid $10,000 to Barton Ross, the foremost expert on the subject, to draft a strong ordinance. And I believe Councilwoman Toth was on the HPC back then, and she still may be in favor of a stronger ordinance, but I think she would agree that the one we introduced -- or having a hearing on here tonight is a good start. And I know my dad would like a stronger one, too, along with many other Summit residents. But the council and most of Summit never had an appetite for that kind of an ordinance. A person's home is their castle, and if they want to knock it down, that's their God-given right. Still, we lose historic homes every year. It alters our streetscapes and the character of Summit along the way. And there's a gaping hole in our current ordinance. Although property owners who seek a variance to renovate an historic home will have their file referred to the HPC, a property owner who wants to simply demolish theirs and start from scratch does not get referred for an HPC review under the current ordinance. To find a happy medium, the HPC and our planning professionals had to perform quite a balancing act. They had to provide an ordinance that would not take away homeowners' rights, but at the same time would slow down demolitions and educate the public. I believe this ordinance accomplishes that. So, this ordinance maintains Historic Preservation Commission as a purely advisory body whose focus is both to educate the public and help protect Summit's historic character. The primary changes demonstrated within this ordinance are as follows. Any real property within the City of Summit, which was constructed a minimum of 100 years ago and/or is located within a historic district, is deemed historic property. To provide the Historic Preservation Commission with the opportunity to educate the owners of the historic home, the city will be testing a new form of historic review referred to as Historic Site Verification. Prior to filing for a demolition permit application with the Construction Division or filing for a zoning permit application that would demolish a significant portion of the front of an historic home with the Land Use Division, property owners would first apply to receive a Historic Site Verification with a filing fee of $50. The HPC holds a responsibility to the property owner that they must first respond to that request for an application within seven days. If they decide to make that -- to make a review, they would then have up to a total of 30 days, so 23 days after the seven, to provide a written and signed report. If they decide not to do a review because the home has no historic significance or is not in good enough shape to save, they will pass on it, and the owner can then go and do whatever they'd like. This Historic Site Verification is required, but non-binding, commentative, and educational report on a particular home that we hope will demonstrate the value and historical significance that a particular piece of property contributes to the character of Summit, and maybe instead of demolishing so many homes, folks will try to renovate instead. I would also offer that you may have heard of some things about this ordinance on social media and/or at prior meetings, and I anticipate you may hear some of those same things tonight. First, as I just said, this ordinance in no way empowers the HPC to make a binding determination about what a homeowner may and may not do with their property. Our Development Regulations Ordinance, or DRO, already does that to a degree with zoning. Nothing will change in that regard as a result of this ordinance. Second, one resident claimed that he might have to get a permit to replace a window or paint the front of his house under the ordinance. That is false, too. Such comments come either from a place of ignorance or political gamesmanship. You may also have heard complaints that this council doesn't know what it's doing because it has tabled a few ordinance after introduction and then passed them without revisions. I'll remind everyone of the reason -- pass it with revisions. I'll remind everyone of the reason a governing body is required by New Jersey law to have two weeks between an ordinance's introduction and its adoption, to allow the public to digest the materials and to allow the council to incorporate public input if it chooses. That happened here, and I'm glad we were able to make improvements as a result of those public comments. That is our job. Had we simply passed the ordinance as originally drafted, those same people would have probably complained that the council ignored the public and operated with no transparency. I think the former's better. We can live with the criticism. We all knew what we signed up for when we took our oaths. But the public should know all of the facts so it can decide for itself what's a valid criticism and what is just politics. With that, I move for a hearing on ordinance 25-3356.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. We're going to declare the hearing open. At this time, would any members of the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Come on down.
My name is James Burgemeyer. It's B-U-R-G-M-E-Y-E-R. I live at 167 Kent Place Boulevard in Summit. I'm also the vice chair of the Historic Preservation Committee. Yes, I've been a member -- I've been a citizen of Summit for 73 years. And over the past decade, I've noticed some changes in Summit. There's been a lot of tear downs. And I just think that a lot of people come to Summit because it's the architectural character of Summit. But if we keep tearing it down, we'll lose all that character. I think that, you know, right now, on the Historic Preservation Committee, we get applications from the Construction Department where a applicant wants -- or they ask us on the Historic Preservation Committee what we think about putting an air conditioning unit on the side-yard setback. But tearing down a house, we have no say, and I think we should. I think right now, there's not a building in Summit that's not protected. If you take Twin Oaks -- excuse me, Twin Maples. That's on the historic registration. And if, for some reason, they wanted to, you know, sell the property and a developer came in there, they could easily rip it down. What really protects homes like that, or any building, is the, you know, a strong ordinance in the council. So, I mean, an example of a historic home that was torn down about a month ago or less was the 68 Valley View. It was a beautiful little 1895 bungalow. And I don't know if you heard that Mark Donahue was the race car driver that, you know, he, you know, he went and won the Indianapolis 500 and several other races. He was in the International Motorsport Hall of Fame, Team Penske Hall of Fame. When he was -- had a funeral mass in Summit, they had over 1,000 mourners, along with Mario Andretti and Penske. So, I think this ordinance is very important. I think it's really kind of a first step, but I think the board should have the ability to just review some of these things before they just, you know, get tore down. Right now, it's just, all you need is a -- fill out a one-page form and a check. So, I think I would like this to be passed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and the little historical minute as well in there. Other comments from the public?
Can I just add one thing? I forgot to mention, we're doing this as a pilot, so we're going to see how it works out for a while. And if we need to make changes or repeal it, we can do that. But we're hopeful that it'll be a success.
I'm Diego Hoick, Argyle Court. And I'm sure Bob is not surprised to see me here. This ordinance is an exercise in taking away Summit's homeowners' property rights. The proponents argue that it is merely advisory and has no teeth. Hogwash. If it has no teeth, then this council is passing an unnecessary tax and an even less necessary delay to any project. We have enough red tape to start any project as it is. But I don't think that this is merely an attempt at doing nothing. I suspect that the proponents of this ordinance are serious and really want to regulate taste and tell their neighbors what they can and cannot do on their property. At a minimum, this ordinance creates uncertainty that may reduce homeowners' property values for two reasons. First, we have no idea how seriously the so-called advisory opinion will be taken into consideration by the city and its offices. And also, there are no criteria as to what constitutes a historic home other than age. The point about criteria is critical. Today, a homeowner can use the well-defined criteria outlined in cities' development regulations to challenge any decision, for example, to deny a permit. However, due to the lack of criteria in this ordinance, a homeowner would be hard-pressed to find a basis to a challenge -- a challenge to a Historic Preservation Commission decision. I agree that preserving historically significant homes is valuable, but this ordinance does not do this. This ordinance is a paragraph that could convert a Historic Preservation Commission into the Summit HOA. Ayn Rand, her architect hard work, has become a beacon of freedom-loving people around the world. At some point in the fountainhead, he is asked, "My dear fellow, who will let you build that way?" His retort, "That's not the point. The point is, who will stop me?" Well, this ordinance will. It gives our city government new powers to stop property owners from exercising their property rights. If there is a genuine desire to preserve historic buildings, then this ordinance must be amended to reflect what criteria other than age make a home historical and what changes are permissible. Similarly, to have a car recognized as historic, its owner must satisfy many requirements related to original components. Please get this right. Vote nay on this draft and reintroduce this ordinance with clear historic preservation standards. Otherwise, you're merely taking away the rights of your neighbors, the Summit property owners. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to declare the public comment portion of this hearing closed. Councilmember comments on this ordinance. Councilwoman Toth.
Okay. Thank you, Council President, and I am happy to support this ordinance. As Councilmember Palowski suggested, in my nine years on the Historic Preservation Commission, we tried twice to give the HPC some teeth with no success, and this is a small step in that direction. As this ordinance goes into effect as a pilot, as you suggested, I would like the HPC to evaluate the Historic Site Verification process as it relates to historic districts. And here, I'm specifically thinking of the Dean Town Historic District, which is notable for its social history more than for its housing stock. A ranch house in Dean Town must go through the site verification process when an identical house on West End Avenue would not have to. So I think going forward, perhaps not every structure in an historic district should be subject to the ordinance, and that could be refined. This concern won't stop me from supporting it. I'd just like to see the applications monitored so we don't unfairly burden some of the newer homes in historic districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I would just like to say thank you for all your hard work, Augusto, and your staff. I know this was a bit of a push between you and Councilman Palowski, trying to figure out all of the details, so I thank you and your staff for reworking this and Bob for...
And the HPC.
And the HPC, yes. And Claire, I think your comments are great, so thanks for supporting this ordinance. And to the gentleman who came up, James, I used to live at 89 Kent Place in Joe Fitzpatrick's house. And if you know Joe Fitzpatrick, unfortunately, since then, he's passed away. But Joe had preserved that house to -- it was just something spectacular. And when you walked in, you didn't want to touch any of the woodwork. You just wanted to preserve what he had done. And it was important. It inspired me to always maintain that house a certain way. The frustrations I had sometimes with that house was it was a small family room for a growing family of four or five, which is, I think, sometimes some of the challenges that families who are moving into these historic homes have, right? They want to maintain it, but they also just don't know how they can live in these older homes with limited footprint. I think what this will do is we have some amazing people on the Historic Preservation Committee, and it might give a family who's considering tearing down some options and some education from our architects and experts like James here, who say, "Maybe you can do it a different way. Maybe you can keep the front of this house." So, you know, thank you for all of your passion around the HPC. I want to say thanks to Caroline King, and this was a long time coming. So I agree with Councilman Palowski. Great job.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to reiterate what Councilwoman Hamlet said. Augusto, great job. We spent the summer going back and forth, you know. This is going to be overly burdensome, but I think that Summit is a beautiful town to preserve. I know that a couple of years ago, Councilwoman Toth just mentioned the one in Dean Town by the Summit Pool. I, you know, I sent out flyers to the community. I didn't want to see that house ripped down, right? That was a beautiful home. The homes there now are, you know, I don't want to disrespect anybody's new homes, you know, they're nice, too. But that was a beautiful home. And I think this ordinance says, hey, let's take a pause. Let's let the interested buyer or the homeowner know that there may be money available to restore some parts of their home, and I think it's a good pause. And I also have to say that, you know, there's been studies from the U.S. Historic Districts, the National Register listing, that found that this increases the property values 9%, 12%. So, and that is -- and that's conversely of what someone else just said. So I think this is a good thing. I also think that I'm happy that it's a pilot because I don't want it to be overly burdensome also on our city staff. They have a lot to do, and I'm sure our administrator will be keeping an eye on that, right? So I am in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Cammelson.
Thank you, Council President. I have a question about the fact that it's a pilot, but we're passing it as an ordinance. So when does that pilot end? I don't know if Bob can answer this question. Like, we say it's a pilot, but it's being passed as law. So is it really a pilot, then?
You want to handle that, Councilwoman Palowski?
It's really a pilot. You know, we can change anything in our ordinances with a two-week period between introduction and hearing, but we didn't put a timeframe on it because we have to change the ordinance in order to implement it. So we'll be monitoring it, and the council can, you know, after a few months, if it seems like it was a bad idea, we can change it, or if it seems like we needed some changes, we can change it. But after many years of deliberation and trying to work out exactly the best way to do it, this is what we've come to, and we're going to try it out.
Okay, that's fine. I just don't think it's a pilot at that point. I think we're just passing it, which is fine. But I did have a comment. I think we can all agree that preserving historic buildings is important and it's valuable. My problem with this ordinance is I think it goes too far. I like the portion about the Historic Preservation being notified before anything is demolished and having a say in coming and, you know, talking to the homeowners, but I feel like it goes too far in, you know, if somebody has a problem with maybe their porch gets damaged or something like that, and they need to do something more quickly, or perhaps maybe they know they're not going to be able -- they know they're going to be able -- I'm sorry. They're going to need to go the most affordable route, and they're not going to be able to take this advice. There's no provisions for anybody to bypass that. Is that right?
Through your -- Council President, to clarify, so the scope of work that would be encompassed in a Historic Site Verification is defined in the ordinance... is defined in the ordinance as, for the purposes of this ordinance, a demolition or a partial demolition. It's to the frame of 50% or greater of the principal facade of a structure, so 50% of the exterior walls of the front side of the structure facing the street, or 50% greater of the total volume of the building. If that is being demolished or plans are presented where this is being demonstrated, this building would be sent for historic site verification. So, and the bits of feedback that our office received when we were working with planner and zoning officer to prepare this and HPC is that, one of the primary comments was, "We do not want to tell people what siding to put on their house," particularly, you know? We could recommend it, we're not going to make you do that. We do not want to tell you what kind of windows you should put in, we'll make a recommendation, but we're not telling you to do it. So if someone were to come in for a permit filing for a regular maintenance item, historic site verification would not be prompted. So let's say you want to replace the boards on your deck, you want to just redo your siding, anything that would fall under regular maintenance, that would not be sent for historic site verification. This would just be a preface towards anything that materially alters a large portion of the structure, the structure itself, and preface a UCC demolition permit application, which has a specific standard.
Thank you, Augusto. So if I have a porch, and it's decaying, and it's falling off, and I need to get it taken care of, and I know that I'm not going to be able to rebuild it, and I'm just going to have to do the least expensive option of maybe steps or something like that, is there any way to bypass that, this ordinance, or no? Does it still needs to go through the HPC?
I don't believe that that kind of work would be flagged for reference to the HPC in the first place. So I do not believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I actually agree with Mr. Hoig that, you know, just because if something is old doesn't necessarily mean that it should have to go through rigorous regulations. I think this is something, and a good opportunity for us to streamline our permit processing as it is. Yeah, I know, I hear quite often that it's an arduous process to get permits. So I would encourage us to review our process of getting permits in the first place. Secondly, just as a side note, I happened to buy Gil Orin's house in 2007, and it was built in 1922, so maybe we can take a look at that, see if we can make that a historical in honor of Gil.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to respond to whether or not an ordinance can be a pilot. And I may stand corrected, but in 2021, there was a leaf blower ordinance, right, which was a pilot. So I believe this is not the first time that this has happened, and I may stand corrected if anyone else has any information on that, but I believe that was a pilot and it wasn't an ordinance. So if you want more information on how that pilot may work, probably go back and take a look at that one. So, thank you.
Councilman Palowski.
Just to clarify a couple of things, and I have a couple of comments and questions for Augusto. Under what circumstances can we deny a demolition permit?
The only person who can deny demolition permit is the construction official in code-related matters.
For code-related matters.
Whatever it is. I don't know what they particularly are, but that'd be it.
Okay, so, but under this revision to the ordinance, once the 30 days passes and the report, because it's not, the HPC doesn't make a decision and doesn't have a say in whether there's going to be a demolition. It's just to educate and make some recommendations that hopefully the homeowner will go with.
Yes, they're purely recommendative. None of the commentary provided would be binding. It's specifically stated in the ordinance that it is advisory only. And to address a prior point, whether there is a question on whether the zoning officer would be, would look to a historic site verification for an enforcement matter, he would not. It is very well understood that in the zoning office, we are not historical experts. We are going to leave any commentary to the historical experts, and that's why we created this system for recommendative reference to HPC and not provide an enforcement capacity.
And is there any criteria other than age for what would fall under a verification requirement?
So the criteria right now is whether it falls within a historic district and whether it is 100 years or older, or whether it's specifically designated as a landmark. And as of now, that's it. I know that seems like a broad scope, but I do also want to clarify that as the natural cycle of development for a single-family, two-family homes happens in Summit, as homes are added onto that list, they are also removed from that list. If a home is demolished, that's one down. If a new home's put up, it's not included for another 100 years. And this has been also a point where, there's been much back-and-forth conversation with the HPC chair to say, you know, there's recognition that just because a home is old does not mean it is historic, and the factors considered are, does it contribute to the streetscape? Is it mentioned in the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's Historic Preservation Office Assessment of Historic Properties in Union County? Those are the criteria, and those are the criteria the recommendations will be made along. But that's about it.
Okay. And then, I don't like extra red tape, you know, when it comes to somebody doing something with their home, and this certainly is a little bit of extra red tape, but I think it's worth it. I wouldn't call this a rigorous regulation. It's up to a one-month delay in the demolition of a home, so.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'll just make a couple of comments. I think I was on the Historical Preservation Commission 10-plus years ago when there was a movement to create an ordinance that had a lot of teeth in it, that would have made the HPC more of a judicial body that could, you know, tell homeowners how to do things and what not to do. And it came very clear that there was no appetite for that type of ordinance in our community. I do give the HPC credit, and Councilman Palowski has worked really closely with them because, look, I am a big fan of private property rights. You know, the home, your home is your castle type of thing, I have a lot of sympathy for that. And being told what you can and can't do around your home, there's parts of me that really irks me to have that happen. However, I also love history, and Summit has a lot of history, and it is really, really sad when these houses get demolished. And I get it, there's a lot of economics around it, and some of them are just not savable because they haven't had any investment in them in decades, but it's still sad. And so when I was thinking about this ordinance, it was trying to weigh the added burden that we're placing on someone who wants to buy a property or even sell their property, what that might affect from their market versus what that might do to someone who wants to buy a house and kind of make it their own. And I was very happy to see that there was a real willingness among the HPC and Councilman Palowski steering the council to really compromise and figure out what was something that we could come up with that would pause the process. To have someone who bought a historic home think about what they were doing with it, to be able to give them some options, to like, maybe there are things that we can do to save this piece of property without unduly burdening them. This ordinance, if a property owner wants to tear down a house, they can tear down a house. That's just the fact. The HPC cannot stop them from doing that. So there, so, you know, I know there are some people in the community wishes they could, but this ordinance is not that. This ordinance is an advisory thing. They make a recommendation. It's supposed to be to allow the property owner, the new property owner, to think about some options. And the way I look at it is, you know, most of these properties, sadly, we may not save a lot of them through this process, but if we save one or two, that's a win. That's one or two houses that we keep that, you know, would have gone away. It's like the dodo bird, right? You know, we only have so many of these historic homes. So we wanted to make every effort to do that. So I, the other factor I think that concerned me was the putting a burden on city staff, and I know we've had lots of conversations about that. And I do think it's important, when we think about this, to revisit this ordinance and just balled and working with Augusto to see, how many applications are we talking about? How much time is it taking city staff to process these? And if it's not a lot, then maybe we can think about, to your point, Councilwoman Toth, maybe adding some additional properties. Or if it's too much, we can maybe scale it down. So I would urge the council to kind of set, you know, a nine-month limit to see how this is going and maybe revisit this next summer, and I would suggest having a full report from your department on applications and how many are due, have we saved any homes, that type of thing, so we can make an informed decision to maybe alter or tweak this ordinance if we need to sometime next summer. So, but with that, I am in favor of this ordinance. Okay, any other comments from council?
I just have one.
Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet.
I would just say, if Augusto's in charge of doing a data analysis on the Historic Preservation Ordinance, we're all in good hands because he can find his way around a pivot chart better than anybody in Town Hall, so I think we're in good hands with him analyzing this data. If anybody wants any data, just go to that gentleman right there.
All right. With that, I'm going to close the hearing on this ordinance, and we're going to move on to the second ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please read the Second Capitol Projects and Community Services Ordinance 25-3357?
Ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, amending Chapter 35 Development Regulations by repealing the existing Morris-Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone District to be replaced with a new zone district that retains the intent of the overlay zone.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number 25-3357. This ordinance, the Morris, it's a little long, so bear with me. The Morris-Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone, otherwise known as the MBC, was originally created in June 2024 to replace the prior Broad Street West redevelopment plan. These parcels collectively known as the Firehouse Site include the Chestnut Public Parking Lot, the privately-owned Finger Lot, the old Firehouse Site, and the Office Building, which is Lot 4. These parcels comprise a total tract area of approximately 1.5 acres with runages on Broad, Morris, and Cedar. This MBC Overlay Zone ordinance created a new zoning framework for the site, which established the permitted usage and development criteria based on extensive community input, thanks to all of you. The MBC Overlay Zone was designed to achieve several community goals: repurpose the site given the relocation of the Fire Department, generate revenue for the city at the point of sale and annual tax assessment, satisfy a portion of the city's affordable housing obligation, and maintain existing public parking and designated parking for St. Teresa's Memorial Hall, and develop the site in a comprehensive manner that is consistent with the character of Summit and complements surrounding land uses. Now, why are we here tonight? On September 3rd, 2025, the Summit Common Council introduced the ordinance 12144 to repeal the existing Morris-Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone to be replaced with the new ordinance, which maintains much of the original zoning framework. This ordinance was prepared for two primary reasons: to modify the bulk requirements to account for the approved land swap with the private owners of Lot 2. It also modifies the overlay zoning to standard zoning in accordance with the city's fourth-round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan to maximize its affordable housing credits. So one of the reasons why we had to go from an overlay zone, which was initially the recommendation from our planners, to a true zoning is so that we could be in compliance with our Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. We are doing this also to create a comprehensive tract because that will obtain a better, hopefully a better bid price when we sell the property, because now it's a comprehensive tract that includes the Finger Lot. So if you're wondering why we had to do this, a few times, there's a lot of very specific reason for that, and I just want to thank our planners and our city staff for doing all of this work, and hopefully we'll be able to get these properties out for sale and get the best price for Summit. So with that, I would like to introduce this, open the ordinance for here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I'm going to declare the hearing open. At this time, would any members of the public like to speak about this ordinance?
Hi, Dori Gagnon, 27, Bedford. First of all, I want to thank you. This is a long time coming. Five of you up here were elected to stop Broad Street West a couple of years ago. The five of you were on this side, and now we're on that side. So I want to thank all of you, not just the five of you, but all of you for pushing this ordinance to vote for tonight. Couple of years ago, we could be having a monstrosity on that site with a pilot program. And now you have this whole builder's remedy issue that you're having to deal with, and now we can have some, hopefully some revenue coming back into the city. And I want to thank all of you for doing what you're doing, because I know it hasn't been easy the last couple of years, but the five of you specifically were voted to stop Broad Street West, and now you're pushing this ordinance through, so I want to thank all of you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I'm going to declare the public comment section of this hearing closed. Comments from council? Council comments? Councilman Palowski.
Just one comment, and I guess it's mildly related to the ordinance. We've heard builder's remedy and immunity come up a couple of times during the meetings so far, and I just want to remind everybody that under the new legislation, we have our immunity because we filed our plan on July, June 30th, and that immunity will continue unless and until we stop negotiating in good faith with our challengers. And we're doing that. We are providing viable options for affordable housing to meet any obligations that any court may impose, and as long as we continue to operate in good faith, even if we don't come to a settlement, we don't have to come to an agreement, as long as we continue to operate in good faith, we will be able to maintain our immunity, and I'm confident that we're going to do that. And this ordinance here tonight is a good step in that direction, given the set-asides that it requires for affordable units.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
Yeah, I would just add, you know, this ordinance was a long time coming. This has been, for those, for people at home who've been following this, this is complicated stuff, you know? Ms. Gagnon talked about this kind of coming out of the Broad Street West issue that we had went through several years ago, and we are, this council's been pivoting now on this for a couple of years. It's slow. Real estate takes a long time to kind of make changes on. We had to acquire this Finger Lot. We successfully did that over the summer. And then, looking at this through the lens of Mount Laurel Round 4, we had to change the ordinance to quote-unquote "harden it," to tell any builder who's going to bid on this is going to have to have an affordable housing requirement as part of, and they'll know that going in when they look to bid on this. From that perspective, we're hoping that we can line this up, and we will have a ratable for the city that'll provide revenue, not just for the city, but for our schools, and the county gets a slice, too, that can pay for the services that we all deem so important. that can pay for the services that we all deem so important in town. Including, hopefully, a price where we can maybe pay down some debt would be my recommendation for what we do with the sale price. So we're getting closer. Stay tuned. I'm hoping that we'll have, we'll further this, but this is a really important first, not a first step, but I don't know, a third, fourth, fifth step along the way to make this happen. Okay? One more comment?
Just a quick comment, just for, to remind everybody who didn't know, we just passed at the Planning Board a master plan consistency review. So that was another step in this process. And then, once the public auction is complete, that developer will need to go through a full site plan application, so just two things.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to declare this hearing closed. Now, there's a third ordinance for hearing on the, on our, on our packet today. However, because they didn't get to this at the Planning Board the other night, and I think for those of you who were there, it went till 2:00 in the morning. So they had to defer the review of this particular ordinance. So that means we need to defer the hearing on this ordinance until November 5th. That'll be after the next Planning Board meeting. So we'll get to that then.
Council President?
Yeah.
I think there may be an intention to table this ordinance if it's
Oh, that's right, because there might be an opportunity to change it a little bit.
Because the introduction replaces this one, so you may want to consider that.
Thank you for the correction, Madam Clerk. So if you noticed, we do have an introduction. I think we are going to take this opportunity because this has been deferred. There are one or two little changes that we're going to make in the ordinance to give a slightly different version to the Planning Board with some improvements. That will be introduced later here. So I think what I'd like to see, if there's a motion then, to table this ordinance that was up for hearing today. So moved. Okay. All in favor?
No, second.
Oh, do I need a second?
Second.
Second, do I need a roll call?
Just make a comment.
What's that? Okay.
Voice call is fine.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so this is tabled.
Councilwoman.
All right, now we're on our section for ordinance for final consideration. We'll just have two. Madam Clerk, will you please read the Capitol Projects and Community Services Ordinance number 25-3356?
An ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, repealing Section 2-29 Historic Preservation Commission of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit and creating a new Part 5 Historic Preservation of Chapter 35 Development Regulations.
Thank you very much. Councilman Pulowski.
This is ordinance for provisions to the historic preservation ordinance. Having just heard the hearing, I move to adopt this ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Nay.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're on to, Madam Clerk, will you please read the second ordinance for final consideration? Capitol Projects and Community Services 25-3357.
Ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, amending Chapter 35 Development Regulations by repealing the existing Morris-Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone District to be replaced with a new zone district that remains, retains the intent of the overlay zone.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance 25-3357. Ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, amending the Chapter 35 Developmental Regulations by repealing the existing Morris-Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone to be replaced with a new zone that retains the intent of the overlay zone. Having just introduced that ordinance, I would like to
You had the hearing.
Yeah, sorry, as we just had the hearing, I'd like to introduce this for final consideration.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so we're not doing number three. All right, that'll take us to ordinances for introduction. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read Capitol Projects and Community Services ID 12211?
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Summit, Chapter 35 Development Regulations Ordinance, Article 7 Terminology, Various Subsections of Article 9, General Zoning Provisions, Article 14 Design and Performance Requirements, and Relocating the Development Design Guidelines from Attachment 1 to Part 2 Zoning.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hamlet.
What page on the packet are we?
Ordinances for introduction.
Six.
Six. Six.
You're just reintroducing with some minor changes.
This isn't, we just tabled the ordinance. We're reintroducing it to minor changes. So it'll go to the Planning Board for their review, and then it'll come back for hearing.
So you just want to introduce the ordinance?
But don't we want to just table it?
No, we already did.
No, you tabled the previous. This is the new version.
Got it, okay.
The insert.
The insert, okay. Oh, so you got, so the correct one is
The corrected.
Correct.
Okay, got, sorry, I apologize. This was, this was a tricky one for our computer system. So this is ordinance of the Summit, County of Union, New Jersey. City of Summit adopted a new Chapter 35 Developmental Regulations Ordinance, DRO of the City Code in 2020. The DRO is a living document which is intended to be updated from time to time as deemed to be necessary for the purposes of refinement, adjust policy decisions, and address emerging land use issues. The DRO amendments contained herein are based on the Planning Board's recommendations derived from a periodic review of the ordinance. These ordinance amendments will better align the city's developmental regulations with its adopted master plan goals, objectives, and policies. So I would like to introduce this ordinance to then send to the Planning Board. And I would say that I would thank Councilwoman Toth for her comments. We've been going back and forth with the chairman of the Planning Board, so obviously value her comments as a longtime zoning board member.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, thank you all for going through these hearings. We're now on to the resolution portion of our meeting. Yeah, Ms. Hamlet, I was wondering if we could do the two maybe playground resolutions first?
Sure. Would it be okay to bundle those?
That would be great.
Great. Okay, these are resolutions 12148 and 12147. One second here. Get into my notes. Sorry. Apologize. All right, here we go. Okay. So these two resolutions will be bundled, and both of these bids were received for maybe playground improvement on two occasions, May 13th, 2025, and July 15th, 2025. All of these bids were rejected on both of those dates pursuant to NJSA 40A 11-13.2, where the lowest bid substantially exceeded the contracting unit's appropriation for the goods or services. So Common Council authorized negotiations for this project on July 29th pursuant to that, which also proved unsuccessful. So both of these, we are very excited, in summary, to finally be able to award the two contracts to bring the maybe playground to life. So I want to thank our Parks and Recreation Department, David and Mark, for all of, and the Advisory Committee for all of their hard work on this. It's been an extremely long process dating all the way back to 2022 and including Mayor Radus, when the Playground Master Plan and the Maybe Playground Subcommittee went through just so much work in order to get this done. Several meetings were held with stakeholders, including parents of children with special needs, seniors, neighbors of the park, to come up with a design that would bring Summit's first 100% ADA-accessible, sensory-friendly, intergenerational playground to life. I've heard David say that a thousand times. $1 million was fundraised for this project, including the Green Acres Jake's Law Grant, along with other state, county, and local grants. Meeting all of the requirements of Jake's Law's playground was an extremely arduous process, but one that was well worth to bring this amazing playground to fruition. Thank you to all the residents who have donated to this project. You really have helped make this a reality, and we could not be happier with the results. Playground where all the components are accessible to all the children, regardless of their need level, including those who are bound to wheelchairs. The Communications Board will give individuals without a voice a way to communicate. The dual-lane zip line will be a fan favorite, and the beautiful main structure guarantees equal access for all. There will also be an area with a sensory musical garden, special swing benches designated with senior citizens in mind, game tables where all of the different generations can come together. There will also be the beacon climber in the playground, which will bring Summit's history to the center of the park as well. And I would just like to, it will also include a beautiful new basketball court being completed as a part of this project. So I am very excited to have been a part of this. I just want to thank everybody for all their support. Like to move forward with this resolution.
Second.
All right, at this time, is there any members of the public like to comment on this resolution? All right, I just want to say, we've got young Mr. Hoyk is coming up to the lectern. He has a comment that's related to recreation. So I thought it would be very permissible to have him give his comment because I understand you have a big test tomorrow, is that right?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carlos Hoyk, a 7th grade student at LCJSMS. I'm here to speak with you guys because I disagree with the new policy banning traditional bikes on sidewalks in the downtown area of Summit. Because on October 3rd, 2025, we had an assembly at the middle school on the use of bikes and e-bikes in town, as you guys just heard in the beginning. In this assembly, it was stated that it's now legal to ride a traditional bicycle on the sidewalk in the downtown area. The penalty that was stated at the middle school was that your bike would be confiscated and have to pay a fine of up to $500 for riding your bike on the sidewalk. I believe that it is unfair. The bikes aren't allowed on sidewalks because it's unsafe for kids to be riding on the streets with cars. For example, my little brother, he's eight. What if he falls on the street and gets run over by a car on the way to Sweet Nothings because he's on the street, and that's really dangerous for him? Like, cars are bigger and faster than us. I'm not particularly very tall. And what if a car doesn't see me and I get run over? I'll probably die, and I don't want that to happen. I love to ride my bike around town with my friends and go to like McCool's or CVS or stuff. And I know that this new rule would make it more dangerous for me to do that because I have to be on the street with cars. I understand that it's dangerous for e-bikes to be used on sidewalks, and I agree with that. But in my opinion, that's not the case with a traditional bike. I have a question for you guys. When did the complaints start about people on bikes? We started hearing complaint, so many complaints about so many complaints and accidents when e-bikes became so popular. Before that, there was no problem with riding your bike on the sidewalk. Yet now, we have this new rule that makes it less fun and more dangerous to ride your bike in town. I hope you consider changing the policy, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your really good comments. If you have a statement, could you leave it with the clerk? Good luck with your test tomorrow. All right, other comments from the public? All right, comments from council? Councilman Boyer.
First of all, I want to thank that young man for coming up and expressing himself. That was, that was truly awesome, and that's what it's about, to be at such a young age to come up and state his opinion about what he thinks is fair and is right. I applaud that young man, and Diego is raising his son right. So I will also say that there's been another young man who reached out to me on Instagram, who is a classmate of my daughter's, and said, "Councilman Boyer," and this kid like flies up and down the street, you know, he's finally wearing a helmet on his e-bike, says, "Councilman Boyer, it's unfair that I have to ride my e-bike in the street, you know, can you change the laws?" And, you know, I applauded him too. I said, "But you know what? You know, you're 12, and you're like reaching out to your councilman on Instagram, right? Like, you know, that is, that is really, that is really good." And I told him, I said, "Give me a call, and we'll, we'll discuss, we'll discuss it and wear your helmet." So riding bikes downtown, listen, we have a, we have a nice commuter bike storage place now. There have been some incidents, you know, we, our downtown is very populated. And unfortunately, kids ride their bikes pretty crazy downtown, right? People are walking their dogs, people, you know, and baby carriages and stuff like that. So I think it's a good thing to just park your bike, walk around town, and get some pizza. And then, when you get ready to go home, hop back on your bike and, you know, be off. But you can ride on the sidewalk anywhere other than our downtown. So we did think about that. So it's different from e-bikes. We do want kids to be safe. So the prohibition is just in our downtown. But again, I applaud that young man for coming up and speaking. Thank you, Council President.
Other comments? Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you. I really would like to echo Councilman Pulowski's comments about Carlos coming up and speaking. It's not easy. It's nerve-wracking when you get in front of, you know, this, this council. And I mean, I remember when I was going up there, I was actually more nervous there than I am here at times. So congratulations to Carlos, and thank you very much for coming. You know, I think, you know, I actually do think there's a difference between a regular bike and an e-bike. And, you know, what we need to do is really balance safety with, you know, also the safety of our children being in the street. So I, I think that this is something that is going to be evolving, and we really need to take a look at this because during my council comments later on, I'm certainly going to address some more e-bike issues. But again, I applaud Carlos for coming up. He's following in his father's footsteps, and that's, that's a great thing. So that's all I had, Council President.
Thank you so much. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I would say maybe it would be nice to have more bike racks even around City Hall in this area, and that way the children can park and walk around town because it is, it is pretty busy down there. So maybe we could look to do that, and they could park their bikes right here, more of them, and then walk to town.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Smallwood?
Sorry, I totally got thrown off track here by Carlos because he did a great job. I am, I do want to talk about the resolutions as well. First of all, I want to thank Mark and David from the Department of Community Programs for working so hard on this. This has been a long time in coming. It's been years of progress, and I'm really looking forward to this being the very first fully ADA-accessible playground for, for our children and our neighbors. In fact, you know, it, it's almost, you know, a blessing that it took a little bit longer than expected because David was actually able to find us some savings. So it's not, actually not as expensive as we had actually anticipated. So I applaud David and Mark for their hard work, and I'm really looking forward to the, the construction of this.
Thank you. Other comments? Oh, yes, Madam Mayor.
Two quick things. One, I want to say that I'm really excited about the playground, and I think this is the first of, of many. So I know that I've heard a lot from young families especially about our playground situation here. And so we're on the road to fixing what we believe is, is a problem. So I'm grateful to David for all of his work and to Mark for engaging the community and really getting this done. And then, second, I just want to address Carlos. We do, there are, the signs that are coming do say, "Walk it, don't ride it." So you can still bring your bike downtown, you just need to walk it so that we keep our pedestrians and baby strollers safe.
And bikers, too.
And bikers.
Other comments from council?
Council President, really quickly.
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
I too like Councilman Smallwood. I too like Councilman Smallwood. Got sidetracked by this young man. I just, I remember years ago, there was a resident that came up, was talking about the sensory music climber, and man, I'm so glad that we put that in there. She, I mean, it was, it was heartfelt what she was saying about her, her son and how much this, how much this will help him. So I remember that. Also, I'm excited to continue the beautification of our village green, as long as we move that hump that goes across from, you know, you know, so we're making progress there, and I hope, you know, that we will put a dog park there at some point as well. So, you know, I'm very excited about our village green. It's supposed to be a gathering place, and we're, we're beautifying it. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Those two resolutions pass. All right. Capital Projects and Community Services, number one, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Sorry, just one second. So many papers up here. I apologize. Can we find it on my thing here? 12196, right?
No, 12158.
Sorry. Oh. No, Kevin's doing this one. Councilman Smallwood. Sorry.
Oh, are you? Okay.
I apologize.
Councilman Smallwood, apologies.
That's all right.
I didn't get the memo.
That's why I was so confused and like, wait, I thought I didn't have one until a few seconds.
I didn't get the memo, so there we go.
Thank you very much, Council President. This is ID number 12185. To authorize the ESCNJ co-op purchase Musco Sporting Lights LLC Upper Tatlock and Investors' Field Lighting Project for $1,021,343. Tonight is a big night for Summit Sports and our entire community. Unfortunately, Gil Orin is not here with us because I think he would certainly be in our audience tonight. We are voting to award a contract to Musco Light, Musco Lighting for the installation of state-of-the-art dark sky compliant lights at both Upper Tatlock Field and Investors' Field. These modern, energy, energy-efficient lights will allow us to comfortably meet the glowing, the growing demand of our youth and community sports programs while respecting our neighbors and our night sky. This has been a long time coming. The vision of lighting Tatlock began nearly a decade ago with the Tatlock Redevelopment Plan. Over, and over ye, over the years, it has been studied, discussed, and refined. A formal lighting study was approved in 2021, setting the stage for tonight's milestone. Since February 2024, council and the Department of Community Programs have worked with the residents of the Tatlock community, listening carefully, addressing concerns, and collaborating, collaborating to make sure this project reflects both community needs and neighborhood considerations. Many of the concerns have, we've heard extend beyond lighting, and we remain fully committed to continuing the dialogue and resolving those issues that matter to our neighbors. At the same time, we've heard strong support across Summit. From Booster Club meetings, public feedback, and community petitions, all underscoring how important this project is for our youth, our youth, our families, and local sports programs. That support culminated in residents in the Summit Foundation stepping up to lead a private fundraising campaign, raising $500,000, a tremendous show of community commitment. By lighting both fields, we received a discount of over $100,000. Investors' Field cost $525,121, and Upper Tatlock $476,222, and $20,000 for electrical design, bringing the total to $1,021,343, far below the original anticipated cost of 1.6 million. And we're not stopping there. The Law and Labor Committee are currently finalizing a new lighting ordinance that will ensure responsible use, balancing athletic needs as well as neighborhood impact. So tonight, by awarding this contract to Musco through the State Contract Program, we are delivering on a shared vision, one that supports our student athletes, strengthens our community, and ensures Tatlock remains a source of Hilltopper pride for years to come. Council President, I move to pass this resolution.
Second.
All right. Would any member from the public like to comment on this resolution? Okay, no public comments? Anybody? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, Kelly Ikavelli, 151 Colonial Road, Summit, New Jersey, 55-plus-year resident of town. I just want to thank council for moving this forward, doing the due diligence. I have been a coach along with my husband in probably six or seven different sports in town, been active in field usage and scheduling, and this will be a great asset to all sports from track to soccer to baseball, alleviating the shortfalls we have with our sports fields in town. So thank you all for all your work. I know it's not been easy, and I listened to the zoning board meeting last week where the suggestions were noted about limiting different things, and I think that was very well thought out. So thank you all.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? All right. Comments from council?
Council President, I don't know how much we can, we can actually say since the lights, right?
Can you talk about the resolution? Councilman Boyer?
Yeah, I'm in support of it. Thank you, Council President.
You're very welcome. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I would just like to say this is a huge victory for the community. These children need these lights, and as Councilman Smallwood mentioned, our intention is 100% to lead this project with integrity, transparency, and, and keep the neighbors included, and that's why we're doing the usage policy in the Law and Labor Committee. On June 14th, we, it was Flag Day, and I remember we had a little bit of a tattered flag, and I was in a bad mood about it. So we went out and got a new flag, and we called up some of the Elks and maybe a Legion person or two, I can't exactly remember. And I think I called Director Schreger, and I said, "How do I get this flag down? And there's a key outside." And so we, we got a flag here, and, and that day, this, this is coming back to the lights, by the way. That day, Gil Orin changed out that flag. And so what I would hope is we can take that flag maybe tomorrow or as soon as we get a new one, Director Schreger, and we can either present that flag to Fran, or we can put that down with those lights, and when we turn those lights on, we can remember Gil at that ceremony. So a huge win for the community.
Some nice thoughts. Thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet. Other comments from council? Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I don't usually talk this much, but being part of the planning board, this was something that we spent seven hours discussing to get it to this point. I feel very strongly, having been involved in youth sports in this town for probably 20 years, actually, no, definitely 20 years, that this is, this is a real win for the community. It's something that's a need. It's really not a want. It's something that, you know, will, will really put us into the next generation as, as a city. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for the hard work on this. But I also want to point out that the planning board meeting did go so long because we were talking about how can we make compromises so that the neighbors have as little impact to their lives as po, lives as possible? So this is a really important thing. It's not finished yet, but, but the lights really are going to impact very, in a positive way, the community at large, and that's our job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Commelson.
Thank you, Council President. I watched the planning board meeting, and I didn't, I saw a few suggestions thrown out, but they were immediately undermined by another comment. So I didn't see any recommendations that came out of the planning board meeting, which was disappointing. And I'm hearing about this lighting and noise ordinance for the first time, which is great. But we haven't seen anything yet, and there's nothing I can do to get my fellow council members to care about the neighbors around Tatlock. Your unequivocal support of the lights means you don't care how long whistles are blaring and lights are on every night. You don't care because if you did, you would have presented a plan to protect the quality of life for the neighborhood instead of racing through your made-up process to say you've checked all of your boxes. If you cared, you wouldn't have rolled your eyes at residents in neighborhood meetings. If you cared, you would have turned, you would not have turned the neighborhood study meetings into a pep rally inviting the entire town to intimidate and heckle neighbors with genuine questions and concerns. If you cared, you would have completed accurate studies instead of an off-season environmental study and a traffic study on a rainy day football game with low attendance. Since the beginning, DCP and Councilman Smallwood have treated the Tatlock neighborhood like an obstacle to overcome rather than good neighbors. They have been more concerned about checking off boxes than whether or not the results they received were accurate and realistic, more concerned about checking off boxes to show the appearance of listening rather than doing the work to make sure the neighborhood is protected. Now is the time to act. With today's votes, there can be no more, "We don't even know if this will happen," or "Trust us." The city must enter into a binding agreement with the residents in the neighborhood that places restrictions on when and how the stadium lights can be used before any construction begins. We need to continue to work on improving traffic and parking. We've made some progress, but this remains a challenge, and results are not consistent. And as a reminder to my colleagues, this is our job. Maintaining safe streets for all residents, not just the ones who agree with us, is our job. It's not going above and beyond to preserve the quality of life for the neighborhood. It's our job. So now I ask my fellow council members to prove me wrong. I said you don't care about Tatlock neighborhood. Prove me wrong. Let's work together and replace the empty promises with action. Let's put lasting protections in place to show our neighbors that city leadership respects and cares about them.
Thank you. Other comments?
I, I just have one.
Councilman Smallwood. Or do you want to go first? Councilwoman Hamlet? Please, go.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Commelson, I was just wondering, you mentioned that we threw out some recommendations. Can you just tell us a little bit more about whether or not we memorialize those at the end of the meeting at 1:30 in the morning? And what they were?
I, I don't know if you memorialized them.
But do you, do you understand that that's part of, part of the process at the planning board? Maybe you missed that, but we, we specifically wrote down, just for the public, we specifically wrote down all of our recommendations for how we could improve the project, and that will, that is actually goes through the Planning Board Secretary. So if there was something specific that we didn't hit, I'd be happy to discuss that with you.
Well, one, one person said, "How about we restrict it only to people in Summit and not rent it out to other towns?" And then another member said, "Well, I don't want to do that. I don't want to take that off the table."
Sorry, which member was that? I don't remember. I was at the meeting the entire time. I, I don't remember that.
It was Susan Bowen. Said, "I don't want to take that off the table." Paul Stern said, "Let's limit this to Summit and not anybody out of town." And Susan Bowen said, "Well, I don't want to take that off the table." Right? Okay. And then I think Jennifer Ballson Alvarez said something about, "How about let's have lights, lights should be off until, off at nine." And then I think Augusta said, "Well, this is more of a conversation about when things are ended, and maybe they should be off at 15 minutes after, maybe they should be off 30 minutes after." I mean, the, the recommendations that I saw, like I said, were undermined. So I did not see, I did not see any confirmation. So I would love to see.
I would say that I think that on, in total, the planning board was, was very much unanimously in agreement with, with many of those recommendations, including not having organizations outside of Summit. And again, all of these recommendations are in the memorialization of that consistency review, and the next step to that is the light and usage policy, which is what is happening at the Law and Labor Committee. So as, as a consistency review, our job, our job that night is just to make sure it's consistent with the master plan as a capital project, right? We can't develop the, the light and usage policy. That's not our role on the planning board. We are there to verify that it is consistent or not inconsistent, that's actually the term, with the master plan. So as a planning board member, that's, that's our only role in that job. It has to go back to committee for the light and usage policy.
Okay, well. But they're good, good comments. I'm not far. Well, I mean. Whatever. Okay.
Other comments from council? Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Commelson, you, you, you were in every single one of those meetings from day one.
I was not.
Okay, may, maybe you missed one. But, yeah, actually, well, David can check the, the notes. We have over 50 pages on the Department of Community Programs site, questions and answers. This program began before 2018. This has not been rushed through. You know, this is something that was presented to council in 2018 when Council President McTiernan was originally on this council. And I think his comment was, "Have you met with the residents?" And no one had at that point. We started meeting with the residents last February, and we had four other subsequent meetings after that. Just because we don't always get the answers we want doesn't mean we're not listening. We are listening. The traffic at the football game on Saturday is much better than it was a year and a half ago, two years ago. The parking situation, much better than it was two years ago. We are listening. And we're not, we're not done listening. We don't want to make your life miserable. We're trying to add to our children's youth sports. And to be honest, when, if, if it were up to me, I would never rent these lights out, these fields out at night to an outside community or an outside vendor. This is for our community. This is for our students. We're fighting for field space for our youth programs. It's 9:25 right now. Youth football has already ended. There's nobody at Talak right now. And they have, they practice on Upper Tatlock where there are lights, but it only lights a quarter of the field. So sixth graders pretty much practice in the dark, seventh graders practice somewhere in the middle, there's a little bit of light, and eighth graders actually practice under the one quarter of the field that is actually lit. Those are sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. No parent that I know of wants to be picking up their children at 10 o'clock at night on a Tuesday night. When Law and Labor finishes with their lighting plan and their usage plan, I guarantee you that there is nothing in there that will say that these lights will be on till 10:00 PM 365 days a year. If they are, I will vote no for it. But I'm not worried about that happening. If it says that we can rent these fields out to outside vendors, I will vote no for This is for our children. Let's get them off their screens, off the couch. Give people who want to walk around the track some, a safe and lighted space to walk rather than on dark sidewalks. This is for our community. Nobody's trying to ruin Tatlock neighborhood. If I lived where you lived, I wouldn't want them on till 10:00 PM 365 days either. But what I do want is to get, give our children the ability to practice until 8:30 at night, which they can't right now. It gets dark at 6:15, 6:20, and when the, you know, the time changes, it's going to get dark even sooner. We, we are listening. Do answers come immediately? No. This is a working progress. But we have taken, David and Mark has taken all of those notes, put them on the website, and has answered those questions as best as we possibly can. and has answered those questions as best as we possibly can with the information that we had at the time. This is a working progress, and we will continue to make it better. This is Summit. We will make things better. I understand that you don't want the lights, period, and that's okay. We all have, you know, I have one vote here, you have one vote here, and it's okay that we disagree on something. But my vote is definitely going to be a yes, because, not because my children are going to benefit from this, but because someone's six-year-old, someone's eight-year-old, someone's 13-year-old will benefit from these lights. We have so many high school students that go on to play college sports, and it doesn't start at the high school level, it starts at our youth programs. We have such a tremendous community built around our youth sports, and it starts in our elementary schools. And we're lucky enough that we have 90% of our youth programs taught by parents. This is such an amazing community, and again, we're not trying to ruin anyone's neighborhood. Would I love to put lights at Memorial Field? It's a huge field, yes, but that's our last piece of green space. And by putting it on grass fields, the utilization of that would just simply ruin the entire park. So having the lights at Tatlock makes the most sense. And again, this is not for our high school football team. Are they going to be able to benefit from it? Yes, and that's a great thing. I've already talked to Coach Kostabos. He said Summit's tradition is playing their football games on Saturday. Would it be great to have one or two football games at night? Yes, maybe a senior night. Same thing with lacrosse, boys and girls lacrosse. Soccer, boys and girls soccer, having senior nights on Friday nights or whenever they would like to have it. There are TV shows and TV series that are called Friday Night Lights, and they're great. But it doesn't, we have four home football games this year. So even if they decided to have all home games at night, there's only four. But I don't foresee that to happen, because Kostabos, there's, there's a tradition about Summit football, and that is playing on Saturday afternoons. And that's, that was his words, not mine. So I, again, I, I'm, I am fully supportive of this, and this has been a long time coming, not just since I've been involved, but since back in 2018 when they originally presented to council. So I, I just, last thing I want to say is the fact that we are listening. I know it's not necessarily what you want to hear, but we are going to adapt, make things better, so that the neighborhood benefits from it as well.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Palowski?
Yeah, I care about the neighborhood, and I think everybody else up here does. If we didn't care, we wouldn't have had so many meetings, we wouldn't have created a Tatlock Neighborhood Committee to address some of these concerns. We've done so much already to improve things down there with regards to parking, single side of the street parking, coming up with a plan for our buses, coordinating better with the BOE. We've done independent research, the Q and As that David took and answered, so that the public could know what we've considered in the alternative, why we haven't gone that way. I mean, Memorial Field, Memorial Field gets overused already. So putting lights on Memorial Field with grass there would be counter to what those fields actually need, which is rest. Putting turf there is cost prohibitive. And putting lights on upper and lower Tatlock Field was cost prohibitive until we had a bunch of generous donors who, who helped us bring this across the finish line earlier than we had originally planned, and I'm grateful for that. As for Susan Bowen's comment, I think it was kind of this extreme situation where, I don't know, Milburn's Field became unusable for a season. And if, if, if we said that we wouldn't rent it out, you know, we wouldn't be able to help our neighboring community. And so, you know, I, I don't know that that's going to happen. It has never been our plan to use this for anything but our own youth sports, which, by the way, have grown in leaps and bounds in the past decade or so. When I played in the Summit Lacrosse Club, there was a boys' fourth, fifth, and sixth grade team for the entire town, there was a boys' seventh and eighth grade team for the entire town, and there was a girls' seventh and eighth grade team for the entire town. Now there's two or three teams per grade for both sexes. We have spring field hockey in addition to fall field hockey. Soccer's always been all year. Baseball plays in the fall now, lacrosse plays in the fall now, and there are even some football programs in the spring, not to mention girls' flag football, which is one of the faster-growing sports. And it's my understanding that they're even giving out scholarships now, and colleges are having it. So, you know, given, and there are no more fields. So something has to happen. We're one, you know, I think 80% of municipalities in the state of New Jersey already have lights on their football field. And I'm glad that we're going to join them, and we need, we need the space. But we're going to keep listening, and we're going to keep doing everything that we can to improve the conditions for the neighbors down there. And we are working on a usage policy that will provide some limitations. To my knowledge, one council can't bind another council with an agreement with a particular neighborhood. So I, I don't see how we could do that. But I'm, I'm going to vote for these lights. I've always been in favor of it, and, you know, I kept an open mind when we had all of these meetings, and you were at several of them that I was at on the track at Tatlock, in an informal meeting, some sit-down meetings, presentations. I really do feel like we've done our due diligence on this, so I think this is a measure that's ready.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, I'll just, oh, yes, Councilwoman Cammelson.
Thank you. I, I just had a few things. Everybody keeps talking about community, and the neighborhood around Tatlock does not feel like a part of the community. And I think it's really important for everybody to hear that. Somebody said to me, they knew this was on the agenda tonight, and they said, "You know what? This isn't my town anymore. It's just somewhere I live." And that's sad. So I hope that you will go into a contract with the neighborhood. I think it's important, and that's something that Council President and I had discussed as, as, as an option, as, you know, something that, that the city should do. And regarding the, the current coach, I understand the current coach doesn't want several night games, but when that coach leaves, we don't know what the future holds. So I think it's really important to get, to get a binding agreement with the contract, I'm sorry, binding agreement with the neighborhood, and I think that would go a long way.
Other comments? Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, Michelle. You know, coaches do come and go, so maybe it's something that we could address with the Board of Education, maybe a contract with them.
Yeah, I was going to say that, I think that was my suggestion that we had. It wasn't with the neighborhood, but it was with the Board of Ed. Say, these are, and make it some amount of time that would at least give the residents certainty that something's not going to change for several years, and the contract's binding. You know, if you want to break it, there are consequences to breaking that, and at least that would give the residents in the neighborhood an understanding of at least how the Board of Ed, which is, you know, the high school sports, which I think are the biggest concern of the neighborhood, they'd have some clarity around that. And look, and the Board of Ed is, as people have mentioned up here, have their own ideas about usage. I know, I've spoken to some of the administrators at some of these, at the high school, and they have, they have strong opinions about usage at night and night games and things like that, and, and all that would be taken into consideration. I, I would just, you know, respectfully disagree with Councilwoman Cammelson's view that, at least speaking for myself, that I don't care about the neighbors. You know, as I mentioned, like 10 years ago when this came up, I'm like, you got to talk to the neighbors. Have you? And when I first kind of parachuted in here, I was, we were in the middle of a huge engagement with the neighbors. And look, the, you know, when you're having an open meeting, you can't, you know, there were, there were meetings for the residents, but there are meetings for the entire town. The town gets to express their view. We just can't restrict it to one neighborhood when there's a huge amount of people who have maybe differing opinions. They should be heard too. And again, maybe the people in the neighborhood didn't like, didn't like to hear their opinions, but they have every right to express them as well. So I, I think there was a pretty, you know, meticulous, a strong process. We, they addressed many, many aspects of neighbors' concerns. And I, I'm proud to say, like, I think Councilwoman Hamlet was the first one to suggest on this dais, the Neighborhood Committee, Tatlock Neighborhood Committee. It's a fricking great idea. Excuse my slur. It was, it was a great idea. You know, when I sat in all these meetings, it became abundantly clear to me that the, there were people who were adamantly against the lights. That is true. But they also listed a litany of issues that they've been dealing with for years. Parking issues, traffic issues, concerns about safety, all these things that, as far as I know, and I've been up here and down here, no one in this community ever addressed. It bounced off the walls and no one took them seriously. I give Councilwoman Hamlet a ton of credit for suggesting this idea. And Councilman Palowski sat on this committee along with Councilwoman Cammelson, and they listened, they came up with ideas, and I'm really happy to, that Councilwoman Cammelson acknowledged that things have begun to improve. That's a huge win for that neighborhood. Nobody has addressed this for that community since they started playing football down there. So to say that, again, I can only speak for myself, that I don't care about the neighbors is just patently false, patently false. This is a process. I think people have articulated that very, very well. This isn't done, we're finished, thank you, drop the mic. This is a process. I'm glad that Law and Labor is working on this. There'll be engagement around this. There'll be feedback around this, on what's the right way to, to move forward. And I, I hope that the community in, in that neighborhood is open to having those discussions, because not to engage is the worst thing you can do, because they are part of this town, and we do care about them. At least I know I care about them, and they should be here to talk about it. But with that, I am going to support the, the resolution. Other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we're now on to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved.
Well, I'll second and make a request that I had wanted to, to comment on some of the items.
Yeah, we'll have a chance to comment.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, comments from the public on anything on the consent agenda? Comments from council?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilwoman Tove.
Okay, thank, thank you, Council President. I'd like to explain the first three resolutions on the finance portion of the consent agenda. These are the ones that, that are canceling, canceling improvement authorization funds. City budgets for capital projects are based on estimated or actual pricing. Once a project has been completed, there may be an unspent balance, and these unspent funds can be canceled and returned to the capital fund balance, where they can be used for various purposes, including paying down our debt or funding future projects. So the first three resolutions on the consent agenda do just that, and return a total of $298,184.51 to the city's coffers.
Thank you. Good. Other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
I have one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that one of these is very important. The Bridges Outreach 5K Run will be on the Village Green on Sunday, November 2nd. So that's going to be a really exciting time for you to come out, either support Bridges or it's a really, always a fun time, so just wanted to point that out. And then there's also, in this consent agenda, is some fencing for the DeForest lot for the farmer's market. So I think that, you know, as we hear from the community on things that we can improve, the Summit downtown has agreed to put an extra piece of fencing around the farmer's market. So we've done a lot of great things there at the farmer's market, including adding some electrical outlets this year. SDI has done a nice job, and I think everybody really enjoys that. So that was it.
Great, thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. All right, that's awesome. City officials, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Go home.
Do we, there was supposed to be a roads update. Do we want to give that quick?
Oh, yes, we forgot to do that. Oh, my goodness. Wow. Director Schrager, thank you so much. Yeah. We have, I know I'm not alone, a lot of council people have heard from residents, there's a lot of work on, on city roads. Most of it is being done by the three utility companies as part of infrastructure upgrades. It can be very frustrating, because some of the roads have just been completed, and then they get dug up. And I get it, it's very frustrating if you've got a brand-new road in front of your house and then it's not so brand-new right away. And, and so we thought it would be very important for Director Schrager to give an update on what we know and the coordination that we're, we have with the utility companies, and some sort of timeline, if we have it, on different project completions. So thank you.
Certainly. So we certainly appreciate the construction fatigue that most neighborhoods have. If you don't have it, then please let us know what neighborhood you're in, because it seems to be everywhere. So I will just say there's, you know, in terms of paving and major construction, there are three entities doing work. I'll take Union County is the easiest one. We don't have an exact date, but they're paving Gladside Avenue in the next few weeks. The original date was listed as September 25th. They're running behind, but that's as part of their annual road paving program. We'll post it on our site, they have it posted on their site as well. Then your two utilities. So we'll start with New Jersey American Water. They're more centrally located in the northern part of Morris Avenue, and they are completing their work there. To put a positive spin, there was numerous water main breaks in this neighborhood over the last few years, so they did come in and accelerate a capital project there to, you know, remove the aging infrastructure to, you know, so that won't happen moving forward. They will begin their paving of their streets, and really, they will finish all their work in a couple of weeks in terms of the replacements, but their paving will start on November 3rd. Again, this will all go to the information office, we'll post it on our website as well. But they will be responsible for paving Weaver, Lincoln, Madison, Lowell, Montrose, Lafayette, and Plain. That's just what their contractor's paving. Some of those streets overlap with PSE and G work, so, but that is all the area that New Jersey American Water has active projects. So once they're done, they are out, they have nothing planned for next year. Routine emergency services and upgrades will always happen, but they have no capital projects, so hopefully weather cooperates, they will be out of here by mid-November, and we appreciate their upgrade, but that'll give some relief of projects. PSE and G is still ongoing, and pretty much all over town, seems to be more on the western side right now. They will be in to start paving streets that have been prepared and are ready on October They will be in to start paving streets that have been prepared and are ready on October 27th. Just to keep things, though, Halloween-related, all utilities have been told they cannot work on Halloween, and have been warned to have their streets cleaned up and their equipment protected for the night before, which some call mischief night, but either way, they will not be out on Friday, October 31st, doing any work. They were instructed that. Their first, it's not their first, it's actually their third round of paving for this year includes Springfield Avenue, where they have trench work, obviously not the whole thing, Evergreen, an additional part of Colonial and Madison, Mealy, Aubrey, Lewis, the remaining part of Beekman, a portion of Ashland where they did work, Pine Ridge, and Baltis Roll Place. Those are the roads that will start on October 27th. Anything that has not been paved yet will likely be in the spring. We'll try to accelerate a few more if the roads are ready for it. In addition to that, though, it doesn't mean, if there is trenches that are failing, if the roads are not in good condition, they will be fixing that much quicker than, obviously, their paving schedule. So, we have engineers going out just to evaluate, to tell them that certain roads are just not going to cut it and not going to wait till paving, and they're aware of that as well. Where they're actually working, list is too big to just go through here, we'll post that on our website, but they do have a lot of active permits. So, again, to look at it half-full, there's a lot of infrastructure getting replaced, there's a lot of roads that are going to get paved, not in the city's dime. Obviously, it's inconvenience, and there, it's becoming, you know, we're all becoming a little fatigued from it, so that's one way to look at it. So, but yes, if residents do have roads now that need a little repair to the trenches in advance of paving, you know, please reach out to us, and we'll, we'll convey it to PSENG, and we'll be routinely checking them as well.
Director Schrager, is the best way to do that through C-click-fix, or should they call? What's the best way for residents to make that?
C-click-fix, we just get them quicker, so that would be, you know, especially if it's on the weekend, but we'll direct them right to PSENG. But if they have my information or anyone in the department, they could reach out as well, so, and we stay on top of them, so.
Any other questions for Director Schrager? Madam Mayor?
Director, do you have any, have they indicated any length of time for when they will be moving on to a different municipality?
They, well, they just, they like it here so much, they want to stay forever.
I mean, we're very welcoming, very inclusive.
No, it's at some point next year, they, so they say, so.
Both, both? Both utilities?
Yeah, well, New Jersey American Water should be out this year. They're done. No capital projects. I mean, routine, you know, any emergency work, yes.
Sorry, you said that.
But PSENG will be ongoing with their projects. A lighter winter, and they can push through a little bit, but, you know, paving would be in, in the spring. Unfortunately, in the spring, we will have a lot of projects out as well, so, you know, again, infrastructure getting upgraded, great. Some inconvenience, not so great, so we'll coordinate with police and keep the information office posted.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Palowski?
May I make a quick comment before public comment? And there's a reason for it.
Sure.
The high school newspaper is called The Verve. They're about $1,800 short this year, and in order to print all nine of their issues, they're looking for some additional subscriptions. I've left a pile of paper on the counter. Please take one on the way out. $50, you can spy on what your kids are doing at school, and encourage your friends to help out, too. Thank you.
Okay. Public service announcement. Thank you. All right. Any other comments for, or questions for Director Schrager? Okay. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we've got to end of our meeting. This is the time for the public to come and make comments for anything that has not been, was not on the agenda, but just remind the public to come up, give your name, your address, and please try and limit your comments to three minutes.
Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street, Summit, New Jersey. Over the past few weeks, I wasn't really sure where I wanted to go with my three minutes, but then I saw a recent post that made it clear. A post on the official Summit Democratic page by a vocal Democratic surrogate that read, "If you support any Republican, you support the destruction and harm the GOP is doing to this country. There is no separation between being a Republican on the national, in, on the national arena and a Republican on the local stage." That post was liked by the Summit Democrats, a count effectively cosigned by local Democrat leaders such as Michelle and Claire, and candidates Jaclyn, Dan, and Chantel. That post and that endorsement reflect what's happened to our local political culture. It's no longer about dialogue or community, it's about division, hostility, and the belief that if you disagree, you're the enemy and you don't care. Four years ago, I might have read that post and nodded along, before I was blocked from their page. But that changed when the Democratic-led council introduced the gas leaf blower ban as the pilot in March of 2021. I spoke out against it, not because I opposed cleaner, quieter landscaping, but because of how it was done, without meaningful input from residents and the workers it affected. Despite being a lifelong Democrat, I was met with hostility from the former chair of the SMDC. I was told I cared more about profits over people, and I was even asked if I was fluent in Spanish after mentioning I'd spoken with landscapers. That pattern continued. When I raised concerns about Broad Street West, I was publicly scolded by a vocal Summit Municipal Democrat supporter, and the community was told that opposition and questions were somehow connected to redlining and racism. When I asked questions about the closure of Maple Street, questions we now know were valid since DOT approval was never received, I was labeled a troll, a bot, and a Republican surrogate. And most recently, after asking candidate Dan Christofeli whether he supports the at-home and summit project, and whether he agrees with the SMDC's brand of campaign attacks, I was accused of threatening him and pursuing him to his car, claims that were later found to be entirely unfounded, thank you Summit Police Department. Let me be clear, no one should ever hesitate to call the police if they feel unsafe or need help. I do not believe that's what happened here. What happened was an attempt to weaponize law enforcement for political gain. The evidence to support these claims is now publicly available through Oprah request, and it consisted only of public questions and emails to his campaign email address. This is what political violence looks like at the local level. It doesn't begin with political harm, it doesn't be, it begins with a dehumanization and vilification of people who ask questions and disagree. And it worsens when others stay silent and encourage, enable, and like it. This is about more than Dan Christofeli's false police report and lies. It's about a culture that rewards silence, punishes dissent, and confuses control with leadership. If that's what passes for politics in Summit now, then every resident, regardless of party, should be alarmed, and we should all demand accountability, honesty, and basic decency from those who want to lead us. Anything less is an insult to this town and its residents. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. Other comments from the public?
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford. Wow, that was really moving, Rachel. I have to say, I met Rachel and Delia during gas leaf blowers. I didn't know them. They're some of my best friends now. And I have to say, what's happening here in the city is not okay. It's not okay, and I agree with Rachel 100%. We ask questions. I come to council meetings, I've been coming to council meetings since gas leaf blowers. I was never politically motivated, ever, in my entire life. As, as the mayor says, Dory always speaks. I'm always speaking. I want to learn. I've been a lifelong resident here my whole life. I give back, like Gil. The speech about Gil was really motivating. Coaching, living, working, being a part of this town is really personable, and I, I thank everybody who's up here. Jamelle, growing up with him, giving back. Michelle, I asked you to recuse yourself the last meeting, and now hearing the debate go on tonight, one thing that Councilwoman Jamie Levine did is she recused herself those sidewalks going in at the Arboretum, because I think, believe she was on the board. Now, recusing yourself because you live across the street from Tatlock, or because you're involved with the PTO there, or you're, you have this, whatever's going on with the United for Tatlock group that you started, you should ethically and morally recuse yourself, because you're so closely involved with that organization. It's something that you would do, we'd do, or Mr. Palowski would do, if he was involved with a firm that was closely associated with here, or that you should do. I think anybody who was on here, if you, Mr. Smallwood, were involved with the firm or something with your group, I would hold you to that, just like I would hold Ms. Cammelson to that, whoever it is. I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat. It's the right thing to do. I'm glad you passed the lights tonight. I don't like the lights, but like I've said before, I want them now, because of this whole process and how it's gone about it. Again, I think the way the politics have gone in Summit, it's not about being a Republican or a Democrat, it's doing the right thing. It's holding people accountable. And I'll hold everybody up here accountable. You might be my friends, but I'm still going to hold you straight. I still call you and say you're not doing the right thing, like that camping ordinance, whether Mr. Palowski said, wow, to that email I sent him. Yeah, I'm still going to call you out on it. So, just remember that. We're all here for the better good of this town, and I want to thank you again for everything you guys have done, and Gil, I know you're watching from up there, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
Tracy Keegan, I'm a resident of Summit. I first moved here in 1994. Over the past few months, local Republican leaders have positioned themselves as defenders of free speech. But for years, they've worked to silence opposing voices, from putting up barriers to a First Amendment-protected rally on the Village Green, to tolerating aggressive and slanderous behavior from their supporters, to degrading public safety by allowing council members to weaponize Oprah police calls. I recently found out that this effort to suppress goes much deeper. In April, Delia Hamlet was CC'd on an email from her supporter to a nearby town clerk asking whether it would be possible to block non-residents from speaking at our council meetings. This inquiry came just before the controversial vote to criminalize homelessness, when Ms. Hamlet knew that people would be coming in droves to speak out against it. From the email, "I'm a resident in Summit, and I am on the Board of Health. At a recent meeting, one of your council members mentioned that you do not allow outside residents to comment during public comments. I mentioned this to one of our current council members, Delia Hamlet, who I have included on the email, and she is curious how you went about establishing that in your bylaws. Can you please point us to your city attorney and/or any current information that you may have, so they can work on implementing this in Summit?" The town clerk replied, "Good morning, I am unaware of any council member making such a statement. All members of the public are welcome to speak at any public meeting. If you have more information of which the, of which council member said this, I will investigate the misunderstanding." To that, Ms. Hamlet's supporter clarified, she was at a Board of Health meeting a few weeks ago, and mentioned that outside residents are not permitted to speak. I believe it was Chatham Borough, not Township. If this is not them, then don't worry about it. Summit would like to implement this if there was such a bylaw. It turns out there is no bylaw, and since it's likely viewpoint discrimination, that makes it illegal. This email, which I am submitting here tonight, makes clear that there have been active efforts behind the scenes by Delia Hamlet, a government official, to limit free speech. Free speech is a bedrock American ideal, and any attempt by government officials to limit who gets to be heard should alarm every person, no matter their party, who values democracy. This is disturbing behavior, and our community deserves better. And just as a side note, I wanted to mention that in terms of the police findings that harassment did not occur, just because something doesn't rise to the legal level of harassment does not mean that somebody did not feel attacked. So, the fact that people are saying that he lied and filed a police report, false police report, is really disturbing, and council members are participating in that. As you all know, I have also been the victim of people operating police calls, and I have spoken with you both for many, many months.
Ms. Keegan, can you finish up, please?
I will. You've never made any attempt to tell the public that they should not be afraid to call 911, that they should not be afraid their neighbors are going to Oprah police calls and shame them, because that's a real threat to public safety.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. You allow people to shout out from the audience, and now you're...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from the public?
Good evening, Mayor, Council President. First, I want to say my condolences to the family of Gil. It sounds like he was a very dedicated community member, and my condolences go to his family. I also want to say, I'm glad that we made up. Mr. Giacobe, good man, you know, my whole team loved you, you know, because you, you let, you let the presider run the meeting, you know. We've, collectively, we've been to over 500 meetings probably in the last few years, and, you know, it's nice to see an attorney who, I'm glad we made up. It's nice to see an attorney let the presider run the meeting. And I'm glad we made up, Mr. Bork, because when I first came here, I was giving you hell, hell in a handbasket every day, you know, and after we had a discussion, I realized you're a good guy, you know? And I'm glad we made up, Mr. McTernan, you know, you have thick skin, you know. I played a song, I mocked you, I did all these things, and you took the criticism, you know. You took it well, you know, it's a big part of government, being able to take criticism, you know. Last time when I was here and I was speaking with my team, I didn't realize what was happening behind me, but Mr. Christofeli wound up, when I said the name in the spirit of Charlie Kirk, I noticed he started doing some signals, and it seemed as if he was signaling to Claire and possibly Michelle, I don't know, if there's any sort of, you know, if you want to touch on this, I'd love to, but it seemed like he was telling you when you heard Charlie Kirk to, like, leave, get away from the podium. I'm not sure what happened. But after I handed you a flag, you did get up and leave, and I don't know if maybe you want to touch on that, if, what was that all about? Maybe you just had to go, and that's understandable. And I've been at meetings all over New Jersey, and a lot of you guys are very attentive, all of you. You, you stick with it, you don't leave, you know, you don't, you have to go to the bathroom every now and then, but for the most part, you were all very much, you know, like, taking part, and you take your role seriously. So, I do thank, thank all of you across the board for that. There was a recent U.gov poll, and it was talking about political violence, and this was, this was from the government. It said 77% of conservatives said that violence is never accepted, should never be accepted, where only 38% of left-leaning liberals said that it was never accepted, just to give a little bit of insight into, you know, the political dealings with, you know, party politics and everything like that. I thought it was disgraceful with Mr. Christofeli when he went and he made his video, his campaign video, talking about how he was threatened, but then told the police that he felt threatened, you know. He used that opportunity to, you know, try to leverage the whole situation with his phony, baloney, persona, you know, trying to say that Councilman Smallwood attacked two other council members for giving an over-exaggerated account of another councilwoman's, you know, stuff, working with the homeless. I used to be homeless for a little bit, and I'm pretty, you know, that touches my heart. And there's a way to make your point without looking like, completely like, just so, just one-sided, like, you know, just shame somebody for the work they do, you know. I think there's a better way to go about that.
Please wrap it up.
Sure. Yeah, and then I also thought it was pretty disturbing how Chief Peters over here, sitting, kind guy, you know, you watch Dan Christofeli come over, and he's belittling him, he's berating him and everything like that. That persona that you see when he makes his videos, that's what he wants you to believe, but we all got a good insight of how he really is hot-headed and does not have a, a way to level himself out or whatever.
Thank you very much.
This is why three minutes is not good enough, and then I'm going to give every meat I'm going to bring up.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
Kevin McGee, 113 Woodland Avenue. I want to talk about the, what, what, what Dan Christofeli did with respect to his police report. I think it's a very dangerous precedent that was set, and actually, he, turns out, I don't think he was the one that said it, in his interview, like, when he, when Dan came out on September 5th and said that he was threatened at his car and followed by two supporters of, of, of Kevin Smallwood, and they were following his lead, that was very dis- and they were following his lead, that was very disturbing. You know, that we reached that level where people are actually threatening a candidate. So, and then that was followed up by the tap into everything else. So this went out broadly, Dan spread that around. And then when somebody operated his body cam footage, and actually, when he had the footage of his interaction with him, you saw that it really wasn't that. And then, when you really listen to what Dan said and all the evidence, the cameras that are in here, you clearly saw something was constructed that didn't happen. Now, if somebody's really genuinely threatened and feels worried, of course they should go to the police. But if there's a real basis for that, you shouldn't have to lie and manipulate things to frame it that way. So, you know, I think that what Dan was really tired of, and what the evidence he showed, was people just asking him questions. Nothing was threatening, there was no vulgarity, and he actually did say threats. He changed what you said, you know, literally, gave this testimony, listen, an hour after it happened, and said that you said you were gonna follow him. And if you really think about the balance of power, you're talking about a wealthy man, right, with two Ivy League degrees, going to the police, you know, telling them that this man threatened them. And I don't think you have the same means as Dan. So there's a real imbalance of power, and you kind of came out of nowhere, and you're kind of unconventional. It's easy for somebody to say, "Oh, here's a troublemaker," and then just believe him. I mean, this is really dangerous stuff that Dan did, and it's criminal. It's criminal to lie to the police. It's criminal within investigation to lie to the police. It's literally a criminal offense. We have somebody running for office that did this, and then nobody's condemned it. The SMDCs actually condoned it and turned him into the victim. Yeah, he did the same thing to Rachel. She's a resident, there's nothing... Yeah, she's... I get she's annoying if she's asking a lot of questions you don't want to answer, but if you just answer them, you guys... Michelle and Claire, you don't answer any of my questions. I mean, you win because I eventually stopped sending emails, but like, to construct this in a way that it's not... And then, you know, Dan said that there was another council member that did it, and then it's like, okay, well, who else did it? Opered. Jaclyn did the same thing. And for Jaclyn, took stuff out of context, used words like, "Rachel sent her a bizarre number of emails." It's like four or five, and I think she CC'd like almost everybody else up here on it. So I think these things... I'm worried that the city's not taking what happened nearly as serious as it needs to take it. Because politics has gotten to a point where people are literally using the police, and this is a valuable resource that we all pay for, to go after people who are literally asking people who are running for office questions. Not using vulgarity, not threatening them, just asking them questions. And you guys can't even condemn it.
Kevin, could you wrap it up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know what else to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? If there's no further comments from the public, close this portion of our meeting, and we are now on to council members' comments and new business.
Are we using the timer?
No.
Yes, yes, please.
Yes, I agree.
Anyone like to make a comment?
Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you. I have... I'll do three minutes, just to make it fair. Just a public service announcement, that Parking Services Agency has announced the annual permit renewal process. It began, I believe, yesterday. Residents are... Resident permits are $10 each, if seniors 62 and older are $5 each. Your current permits are valid through October 31st. This is for resident parking, as well as the transfer station. Residents are encouraged to renew their permits online at cityofsummit.org/permitrenewal. Step-by-step instructions are available in the Help section on the online portal. If you need further help, please do not hesitate to come to City Hall in person. Renewal appointments are available Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Please call to make an appointment. The other thing, I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, and there's been quite a few incidents that have happened since. Again, I'm gonna leave this up to our Safety Department and our Chief of Police and his force to come up with something or to recommend that this council can do. But e-bikes, it is... There was a... I think there were two, either two or three kids in Jersey City last night, four kids, from Jersey City last night that were involved in a hit-and-run, and I believe they're in critical condition in the hospital. Last week, there were two young ladies that were run down by a a young man, 17-year-old boy, doing 70 miles an hour in a 25-mile zone. I think that was a different situation, but the fact of the matter still remains that we need regulations for these e-bikes. I am going to propose this, I'm just gonna throw this out there. I would really like to see that anyone under the age of 17 who does not have a license must complete a safety course and a written course here in Summit, get a Summit license or Summit registration for their e-bikes. Our children do not know what the rules and regulations are of our roads. And yet, we're forcing them in downtown for e-bikes to be on the street. We have to do something before something happens here in Summit, and I don't want to be on this dais explaining it, talking about it, and mourning it. I hope we do. I hope Safety Committee will get on this as soon as possible in their next committee meeting, and we can come up with a resolution very soon. The other situation I want to talk about is the light, the beaking light at Union Place and Maple Street. There is no stop sign there. And Chief, I don't know if you want to pine on this, but if there's no stop sign, and if I'm on Union Place going towards Maple, I guess I don't have to stop, I'm just getting a yellow flashing light. I would suggest, and possibly, if we could, maybe Safety needs to look at this as well, at least on Union Place, going towards Maple, change that light to a red flashing light, and the other two lights on Maple Street, keep them yellow, flashing. I still don't know the history behind that island in the road. I don't know if it's necessary, but at least if we could make the light on Union Place going towards Maple Street a, at least a flashing red light, so that... We have three crosswalks there. One crossing over Union Place, and two crossing over Maple. I'm surprised there hasn't been more accidents there so far. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. At our last meeting, council passed a resolution authorizing the sale of notes to fund the 2025 capital budgets for the city and for the sewer and parking facilities. So last week, we successfully issued a nine-month bond anticipation note for $10,338,500 at an effective interest rate of just 2.609%. That's a spectacular result, and we should all acknowledge the hard work of CFO Baldwin, Finance Director Kobiliska, and their team in securing such favorable terms for the city. These notes are timed to mature with other notes that have already been issued. They'll all be rolled into one long-term bond issuance to maximize the economies of scale. That's what I have.
Thank you so much. Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. On the e-bikes, it was a different situation in Cranford. I believe those girls were targeted, but they also weren't wearing helmets, and they were doubling on the e-bike. I'm not sure if there are any laws against that, or if that's something that we could consider here in Summit. Political violence is never acceptable, whether it be physical or weaponizing the police against your neighbors. I'd be good with four and a half minutes, I've said that before. Nobody should feel like they can't call the police for fear that they'll be shamed. On the Verve, one more time, they'll also take donations. I will put something up on my council page with directions as to how people can contribute in whatever way they're comfortable. "As You Like It" by William Shakespeare will be produced at the high school on November 13th, 14th, and 15th at Summit High School Auditorium. These kids do a great job. We don't just have a talented group of young athletes in this town, we also have very dedicated and talented performers in various arts, and I encourage everybody to go and try and check it out. The dog park is staying up for at least a couple more weeks, is that right, Tammy? And we are looking into how to make it permanent. The grass has been a challenge, and we're trying to figure that out, but please, everybody, continue to enjoy that for the next couple of weeks at least, and hopefully shortly thereafter, we'll come up with a more permanent solution. Basketball courts at both Wilson School, outdoor basketball courts at both Wilson School and at the Community Center are going to be revamped. I think we're gonna dig up some of the old asphalt and put a nice new layer on it, so they'll be smooth. We've also talked about putting pickleball lines and nets out there so that people can enjoy the fastest-growing sport in America. First Amendment, we'll take all comers from wherever you are. Come up here and speak for your three minutes, maybe someday it'll be four and a half. We don't care who you are or where you're from. There is a carve-out in the sidewalk on Beechwood Ave at the corner of DeForest, and I believe before she retired, Mr. Chi's wife, Mrs. Yang, used to sell hot dogs there. That might be a great spot for a bike rack, where kids can leave their bikes and walk around town when they're coming from that part of town. We probably could find a couple more spots for that to alleviate and make safer kids who can't ride traditional bikes on the sidewalks in the Uptown area. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I wondered if you'd give me a couple of minutes to make a comment.
Door was locked.
I feel compelled, the door was locked.
Were you here for a long time out there?
A little bit, yeah.
The door was locked, I mean, I had to tell you, I'm just letting you know.
Okay, if the door was locked and you couldn't get in, sure.
I'll be brief.
Three minutes.
Yes.
I just want to comment about the Canoe Brook Parkway neighborhood. Ms. Kamelson, you and your clique do not represent me or my neighbors. You've made a lot of statements about certain council people which are wrong and not true. You know, over 2,000 people signed a petition against Broad Street West. Over 2,000 people signed a petition for lights at Tatlock Field. I moved to my home on Canoe Brook Parkway over 15... I mean, sorry, over 30-plus years ago because of its proximity to Washington School and Tatlock Field. And I've enjoyed it every minute of the time I've lived there, and I've had absolutely no problem with the activity or the traffic or what goes on. In fact, I enjoy listening to the children playing during the day. I enjoy the activity at the field at night. I enjoy listening to the sports, and I participate. And I have coached youth sports for many years. So I think you need to redefine who represents the Canoe Brook Parkway neighborhood, because you don't. You represent a clique, and I can guarantee that you will probably be moving out of this neighborhood long before I do, because you'll be tired and done with Summit. And I just would like to thank this council, because, you know, the neighbors don't get everything they want. I didn't want sidewalks on Canoe Brook Parkway, but you are getting them on one side of the street, okay? I don't think they're needed. And I think, but of a bunch of people, a small group of very loud-mouthed people yelled enough to the point that a couple of councilmen had to listen to it, and now we're wasting taxpayers' money on sidewalks. Well, you have them, so there's compromise. And I think these lights are a great move, and I applaud the council for doing it. I sat on the planning board till 2 o'clock at night to listen to some of the opinions and take them under consideration. And we did put a number of things in. Our attorney was writing down conditions for our memorializing resolution, which is going to be sent back to the Law Committee. So I think for you to stand there and sit there and say, "You represent all of Canoe Brook", count the number of signs on the streets that say "Stop the Tatlock Lights". It is minimum. There are very few. You don't represent us, and you don't represent the majority of the people that live in that neighborhood. And that's my opinion. Thank you. And thank you, council, for listening and for the hard work you do. And this comparison to Washington politics is just insane, and if any taxpayer votes for that, you have to be crazy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, back to council comments.
Councilman Boyer, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah. I'm gonna be brief, because Councilman Smallwood and Palowski have totally taken my spot these last couple of meetings. Yeah, right. I don't know if anybody knows how it feels. You know, Mr. Lujoy was gonna say 15 years, and then he corrected himself and said 30, because his wife was my teacher. And, you know, to be elected councilman, and when I see my teacher and the way she looks at me with like pride, you know, it warms my heart, you know. And it was the same way with Gil. I remember Gil handing out equipment when I was in fifth grade, football equipment. Him and Coach Woods, Jay Woods. Gil was a special human being. There is a... I look at Summit in the black community, it's like The Inkwell. It was a movie that came out. And he knew all of us. He knew our parents, you know, he helped us. He was some folks' attorneys that couldn't afford attorneys. I mean, I don't know how many wills he's written for free for people. You know, I was gonna work all throughout high school, and freshman year, you know, he came up to me, and I was on the sideline, and, you know, and I was just looking at practice or whatever, and he came, and he said, "What are you doing? What are you doing on the sideline?" I said, "Well, you know, I want to work," or whatever. He's like, "I need you out there in the field," you know. And it was like one of the best decisions of my life to, you know, play Summit football and just have him as a coach and a mentor. And his support during my campaign run was like, was amazing. To see how proud he was of me, like, yo, look at these guys on council, this is crazy, right? So I loved him. I loved him dearly. Lastly, last week, there was a Summit Housing Authority meeting. And listen, I am... You know what? Every council meeting, I'm gonna talk about it, because this is serious. So I wrote an email to the Summit Housing Authority, and I said, "Listen, I think you're violating laws." Their attorney, they looked at it, and they had a public meeting. It's public, you can look at the notes. They said, "Councilman Boyer, we agree. We have been charging excessive increases beyond the 10% limit for continuing tenants violating NJSA 46-8-21.2." Basically, if I paid $1,000 in rent, and I paid $1,000 security deposit my first year, and then the next year, my rent went up $2,000, they would charge me an additional $1,000 for a security deposit. That is against the law, you can't do that. They've been doing it for years, and they admitted to it. I'm like the crazy person like saying this up here. Like, I had to go and investigate and find this out. This is 195 units. Weaver Street, Glenwood, Vita Gala. Elderly people, folks, Section 8, taking money from them. Miscalculation of rent. People in there that don't have leases. I got an email today, and there was a group of folks over there, and I guess we went a little late. And there was Ms. Mitchell was gonna make some comments, because she sent me an email and said that she was being evicted tomorrow because they wouldn't accept her personal check, which she got from her pension. They are having an auditor come in to audit their financial records. You know, I... And I don't know if a city solicitor may can opine on this, but I think they should halt any eviction... but I think they should halt any evictions that are in process in those three areas until the financial irregularities are worked out. We call ourselves a town that fights against homelessness, but we're gonna put somebody out in the street that has a kid because you wouldn't accept her check? I mean, this is a summit, and I hope everybody in town watches this. We all should stand up, you know, the Housing Authority is out of pocket. This is ridiculous. And I'm gonna, they're gonna hate me. "Oh, Jamelle, why do you come up there? This is not for city", you know, "People should notice". Yes, they should. Yep, and I'm gonna tell. I'm gonna tell on you, absolutely. I'm gonna tell it. I'm gonna tell it every time I come up here. Every meeting I go to, every email I get, I'm gonna recite it. I don't know if we can do this, but I think this council should do a resolution telling the Summit Housing Authority that they cannot evict anybody until the financial irregularities are worked out and they finish an audit. I don't know if you wanna opine on that. I don't know if we have the authority to do that. I know we gotta go to HUD, right, but come on.
Yeah, we have to go to, you'd have to go to HUD, but we could, we could write to HUD if they're doing this audit and ask them to intervene.
Well, maybe we can, we can talk about it, because I would hate for somebody to get evicted, especially for back payments of a security deposit, when they're being audited. You know, that's all I gotta say, and I'm gonna continue to say it. I don't care how much.
I think that if there's a wrongful eviction too, they could expose them to liability, so it's high beho of them to hold off on doing anything until they make sure that their audit is correct, they've charged the correct rents, they have the right security deposits, the security deposits are in interest-bearing accounts, which is required under New Jersey law. Evicting somebody is not an easy thing, and judges don't look very favorably on it.
It shouldn't be, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but what's happening is that the Summit Housing Authority has an attorney. The person that's going to court doesn't have an attorney. Who argues for them? Who's their voice? You're in the court, everybody knows this. If you've ever been in a courtroom, if you're not there with an attorney, you're missing out, right, on the whole procedure. So they have an attorney. This person doesn't have an attorney.
I can reach out to the Summit Housing Attorney and say that the council's made it known that they think everything should be held in the balance until your audit's done.
Thank you, thank you, City Solicitor Jacoby. Please do that. I don't think anybody should be evicted until the financial irregularities are worked out in the Summit Housing Authority. I think that would be a horrible thing for us to let happen. Thank you.
Other comments from council? Councilwoman Cammelson.
Thank you, Council President. Regarding the e-bikes, after the tragedy in Scotch Plains, I immediately asked to discuss this in safety again, and it's something that we discuss quite a bit in safety, and I don't know, not to put you on the spot, Chief Peters, but there's a lot of challenges regarding us. Would you mind just sharing some of the challenges that we have with restricting e-bikes, and it's, we continue to discuss this, but I feel like it might be helpful for...
Are you council president? Good evening. Shaking back there, it's freezing in here. So first and foremost, I just wanna touch on a few things that we have been doing, 'cause I know some of, if certain people were busy, right, we're all busy. You might not be paying attention to a few of the social media posts or some of the other things that we're doing to try to mitigate some of these dangerous acts that we're seeing out on the roads. So we made flyers back in May on the newly adopted e-bike ordinance. We had them translated to Spanish as well. They were disseminated to certain establishments in town that often have patrons that are Spanish speakers. They are posted. They're up and easily viewed. They're also in some other businesses in the Central Business District. In addition, we adopted a summer program rewarding safe biking for July and August, handing out gift cards through the Summit Downtown, Inc. Signs are going out up this month. I spoke with Director Schrager last week regarding signs that encourage people to walk it, not ride it in the downtown, and also reiterates the ordinance with a QR code actually on the sign that takes you to the Summit, City of Summit Police Department's website. It gives you a ton of information on e-bike safety, bike safety, videos, all types of literature. In addition, we did a PSA, Public Service Announcement, on social media, which actually had over 30,000 views to date. That was posted on September 12th. We did a Q&amp;A with an e-bike expert last week on Facebook Live. I'm not sure if you guys saw that with Officer Kritiga. That was very informative. Officer Kritiga also presented at PTO meetings, as well as the middle school last week. Not to say that we were looking to scare people or Diego's son. I appreciate him coming up here and giving his comment, but, you know, sometimes taking a firm position with teenagers and trying to drive our message home is the right approach. I think one of the slides did show an e-bike that was on a flatbed. We do reserve the right to impound these bikes if we find that they are being operated reckless. But the impound is not permanent. All the, it's a 24-hour impound, and it just gives a reason to have the parents come in and have a discussion with them about how the e-bike was being operated. Our bike safety page is on the City of Summit's website, hashtag, or I'm sorry, forward slash Summit Police, and then I believe the mayor is gonna comment on, or did you already on your Monday with the mayor with the e-bikes? Did that go up? That's coming up. As far as the challenges, I do think that the state, we saw Union County last week, they did an emergency declaration to ban all e-bike and e-scooter operation in county parks. I know there were some questions about municipal parks. It does not cover municipal parks. It's only county parks, which is Bryant Park in town. My understanding is they are gonna pass some type of directive that covers the whole county, but that was just an emergency use after what happened in Scotch Plains. There was also a horrible accident up in Montville, I believe, or Montvale. But that being said, you know, it's difficult with these e-bikes, because a lot of the classifications aren't outlined within the DMV. The Class III bikes do fall under the same standards of a moped, which requires registration, insurance, and a driver's safety course through the DMV with a license. That being said, some of these Class II, I and II models, which if we did a simple Google search as a, you know, field officer that makes a stop out on out on the street, we might find that they are only a Class I or Class II, but we're also finding now that a lot of kids are altering the governors on these devices and allowing them to go 10 to 15 miles an hour faster. I don't wanna get into how they're doing that. I'm sure you could do a quick YouTube video, but there's plenty out there. But that's a challenge for our officers, because again, we might stop them for reckless driving. Google the make model of the e-bike. It'll show that it only maxes out at 12 or 14 miles an hour, not knowing that they might have tampered with the governor, which now allows it to go 25 or 30 miles an hour. To council, I think it was Councilman Smallwood that referenced the, one of the accidents where the helmets were being worn. Oftentimes, these kids that are riding the e-bikes are wearing bicycle helmets, and unfortunately, bicycle helmets aren't rated for a crash at 30, 40 miles an hour. So it is a challenge for us. We're gonna continue. We're not gonna give up. We're working through the Safety Committee. We're working with the Schools on Messaging. We're working with the council. We're doing everything we can to sound the alarm, 'cause I do feel we're at that point. I do not want any of, anyone in this town to experience tragic accidents that have happened to date, but I am generally concerned about these e-bikes and where this is going. I think that the state is moving in the right direction, but I do think it's gonna take time. So that's where we are right now.
Chief, good question.
Yeah, please.
I hear a lot about e-bike regulations, but they have to follow all the rules of the road, right?
Yeah, just like any other cyclist.
Just like anybody else, right? Running red lights, right?
One of the things that I think Michelle also, I brought up in safety, was when our officers get behind, and if you go on YouTube and do a quick search, Westfield actually had an incident not too long ago where there was a couple dozen kids riding down Central Avenue, ended up on South Avenue, very busy roads in Westfield, just coming out of their Central Business District. And, you know, some of the comments on the video are why the police do nothing. We have to weigh the balance. Same, same thing when we chase a car. What's the, what's the potential dangers to the driver? What's the potential dangers to the general public? Because the last thing we wanna do is, you know, illuminate our lights and get our sirens going, and then all of a sudden, we caused the crash. So oftentimes, our officers will monitor and then, you know, possibly effectuate a stop after they're out of traffic view. But if they take off on us, we're not in the business, you know, of necessarily causing an accident or causing harm to a teenager who's operating a bike carelessly. We might create even additional danger for that teenager or for other people on the road, so that's, that's a challenge that we face as well. But again, we're doing everything we can to work through it and really sound that alarm to the parent. At the end of the day, I think, you know, I'm a parent myself, refused to buy my middle schooler an e-bike, but if I did, I would have a conversation with him and how to operate it, 'cause I see it in my town as well. And, you know, they're, they're moving. You know, they're definitely going faster than I think what these things are designed to do, so.
Chief Peters?
Quick question. I think someone suggested maybe Councilman Smallwood about some sort of safety test and such. I just, I think when I was a kid, embarrassingly to say, I think I had a moped. And I believe I had to pass some sort of safety thing before I was able to operate that thing. That thing goes a lot slower than I see these e-bikes zipping around in. Is that a possibility? I'm not holding you to it any, or anything, but is that something that potentially we could think about at the local level?
Here in town, I think we put it on the agenda for the next safety to talk about it. I think there's a lot of logistical measures that have to get worked out. I know the state's moving in that direction. Like I said, for a Class III e-bike, they do require that now, but, you know, to the point I made earlier, some of these Class I and Class II's, simple Google search will show that they only do a limited amount of miles per hour when we find out that they've been altered and they're actually going a lot faster than than even the parents know. Because again, you might purchase one for your kid on Amazon. We had a situation where a parent purchased it for their child on Amazon. I heard this from one of the employees at the bike rodeo today, who works for Trek, where they brought this e-bike in where the front tire was all mounted wrong, and they said, "Our son wanted to put it together." So they let their teenage son put together this, this bike that's electrically charged, that goes 20, 30 miles an hour, and the city, I mean, you should have seen the person from Trek. Their mind was blown, but that's a concern of mine, because parents might not necessarily understand what the potential is for this bike when they buy it, 'cause it might list 12 miles an hour, 10 miles an hour, and then it gets altered, because teenagers are gonna do what teenagers do. Did you have something to?
Just one quick comment on this. And thank you, Michelle, and the Safety Committee for all your work on this. As a matter of deterrence, couldn't we do a recorded message from Ryan Peters, Chief of Police in Summit? You may or may not know this, but if you're riding an e-bike, you must wear a helmet. You must stop at stop signs. You must obey stop signs. You must obey speed limits. You must ride safely. If you ride recklessly, the police can and will impound your vehicle. If you make any of these violations, we will ticket you. Class III requires a license. A modified Class I and II will be considered a Class III, and you will be ticketed accordingly.
Yeah, we've done all that. I mean, if you think it's gonna carry more weight coming from me.
No, I mean like a pre-recorded announcement, make a play periodic.
We've literally touched every kid, not literally, but in the middle school, we presented to every kid about everything you just said. We were just there this week. We did an hour-plus-long, you know, Facebook Live, sending that message home, and I'm just, you know, again, I'm sounding, we're sounding the alarm. The mayor and I have had more conversations about e-bike safety and what we're gonna do to kind of mitigate any of these dangerous situations that we all see. It's not like just, it's limited to just the police. Everybody sees it. And it's almost like, you know, a train that's gone out of control. We're just waiting for something bad to happen, and and I'm very concerned. If a message from me will carry more weight, I'd be happy to do it. I think the mayor said it the other day. There's not a person I won't talk to. I'll talk to anybody, anytime. Like, I like to talk. Put me on camera. I'll do a jam on camera. But I just, you know, I think at the end of the day, we have to make sure that the parents are having these conversations as well, and that they're monitoring what their children are doing, and if they are altering these e-bikes, 'cause it's gonna create a more, you know, unsafe condition for them to be operating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other comments from council? Yes, Councilwoman Cammelson.
I have more. And thank you, Chief. That was really helpful. I think, I think it's good for everybody to hear that. I appreciate that explanation. There were a few things. Dory left, but last meeting, she accused me of several things. I see she toned it back today. But, you know, she mentioned recusal. One of the first things I did after I was sworn in was I reached out to Mr. Jacob, and we discussed the situation, and he, you know, said, "Let me, let me look into it. Let me do some research", and he wrote me a memo that said he didn't see any conflict of interest, so, you know, it's something I discussed with him earlier this year. Last week, she, she accused me, or me and/or my husband of suing the city of being part of that lawsuit, and that's not true. She knows that's not true, because she was told that's not true. I didn't, I mean, people called me the next day and they said, "Why, why, why didn't you say anything? Why'd you let her say that?", and I said, "Well, it's Dory. She defames everyone." I, you know, like, this is no different. But it wasn't true. She's defamed many people, many people. So I'm just the latest person that she's defaming, but that's not true. And, you know, for her to say that she's mad about the way the neighborhood went about it, I mean, my neighbors, they have all the same rights that everyone else in the city does. They have all the same rights that the neighbors that live near the Red Cross building have, because those neighbors were in here with a lawyer last night. My neighbors have those same rights. You know, they have all the same rights that Dory and her neighbors had when Oratory, when Oratory expanded. They have all the same rights that residents for Summit had. She got up in that planning board and said, "Well, it's a conflict of interest for Rob Simon to be representing the neighborhood, because he represented me and 75% of the planning board." So, I mean, they just have all the same rights, and, you know, I, I just, I really have a problem with, you know, the picking and choosing which neighbors have which rights. I'm thrilled that sidewalks are going on Canoe Brook, because it's a safety issue. The, the kids need the sidewalks. They need the sidewalks. So I know Mr. Lejoy isn't happy about that, but I'm, I'm thrilled, and I can't think of anything else, so I think that's it.
All right, other comments? Councilwoman Hamilton.
Well, a lot to unpack there. Not sure where to start. I'll start with Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I got my mammogram within the last couple of days. That was a, it's a good reminder to get your mammogram. On a lighter note, we are making some progress with the noise at Overlook. We've had some conversations with the CEO and the COO, and our wonderful city communications officer has put out a press release to local residents so that they have a better understanding for the timeline around when the generator will be going on for the electricity transfer. It's been pretty painful for those residents, and I would say that this is a good example of how, when residents complain and you get an answer, sometimes you gotta dig a little deeper. And sometimes you gotta go to a neighborhood at 10 o'clock, at 10:20, at 10:40, at 11 o'clock, because generators switch on at different times, and the electricity load changes. So sometimes when our Board of Health would go out, they wouldn't hear it, but 20 minutes later, when I would go, boom, trigger. And so sometimes residents, and in fairness to the city employees, and even the Board of Health, everybody thinks they're going crazy, because they say, "Well, we've heard these complaints, but, you know, we've addressed them and we've had decibel readings." But it just shows you that our job as elected officials is to advocate for you. Not to degrade residents. We don't degrade residents. We advocate for you, whether we like you or not. Peter Lejoy is one of my biggest supporters. He didn't want the sidewalks. I got more hate mail that week from some Republicans than I've ever seen. We're still buddies, but, you know, he didn't want the sidewalks. Now I got, I got a bunch of Republicans not voting for me, and a bunch of Democrats not voting for me either, because they weren't gonna vote for me either way. Right? That's what, that's what this is about. It's about representing people, not demeaning residents. It's about, it's about doing the right thing, even when you don't agree with them. So I'm happy that Overlook is getting solved. You know, as far as the Summit Housing Authority, I've been screaming about the Summit Housing Authority for years, to the point where they told me, some of the members on the board, I was harassing them. I'll never forget that. I was harassing the Summit Housing Authority Board? Because I was asking a couple of questions about a 17 to $20 million project? You gotta be kidding me. Of course I was emailing and asking and asking questions. And I agree with Councilman Boyer. You know, tonight was a perfect example. We had three residents from Summit Housing Authority sitting in the corner. They didn't even get a chance to speak. They didn't even get a chance to speak. So when a resident came up here tonight, and she said, "I was copied on an email", I'm copied on a lot of emails. I got news for you. And yes, I was copied on an email, the date of April 22nd, which was when I think we met. met Mikey here. I think that was your first experience here at Summit. Yeah, it was that day. I think it was that day. So that was the first day where we met our special friend here and all of his friends. And everybody was bust in from outside of the community to talk about the homeless ordinance, the anti-camping ordinance. And, you know, I've been to more meetings till 2:00 AM than most of you all up here. Not to say that you're all not in them, but I'm at the planning board and I'm just at some late meetings. And so to say that I was part of an email exchange where I was advocating that the public, people, members from outside of the public can't come to our meeting, I will tell you this in all transparency, sometimes I wish that those three residents, if they were there that night on April 22nd, I think sometimes they have a right to speak first. You may not agree with me, you may not disagree with me, but the facts are, we're all here rambling and three people from our Summit Housing Authority who are living in poor conditions, being evicted and overcharged on their rent or security deposits couldn't speak tonight? And so when that supporter came to me that morning and she said, "I'm telling you, I just heard. I just heard that Chatham's not allowing non-residents." Now, this is 9:22 in the morning. I pulled up the email, 9:22 on the date of April 22nd. And she copied the Chatham Borough Clerk and said, "I heard that at your meetings, you're not allowing non-residents. How did you do that? Because I think Summit might want to do that too." I don't think I responded. I'll have Rosie check all my emails, but I don't think I responded to this particular chain. And the Borough Clerk comes back and she says, "Well, that's not us. That's a mistake. Maybe it's another borough." And so the supporter kind of rests their case. And, you know, I mentioned that night at the, as long of a night as it was, I said, "You know, it's important to hear different perspectives from the community. That's why we do this," right? The last council had zero dialogue. It was like robots up here, right? I've disagreed with my colleagues up here. We don't think the same. I'm sorry I'm talking too much, but it's very frustrating when somebody says that I'm trying to silence people. That's the last thing I'm doing. I'm listening to everybody. I've got more emails than I even know what to do with. There are no more minutes in my day to listen to people. I've tried. I can't find any more. And so the accusation that I'm trying to shut residents out is patently false and could not be more, could not be further from the truth. And what happened to our residents? You know, I didn't know a lot about filing false police reports until recently. I had never been involved with any of that. So I'm learning as we go. And I think one of the things that I think I've learned in having some of our non-residents come is asking tough questions that we may not know the answers to that somebody else knows, right? And pushing the envelope a little bit. But, you know, that's what makes us good elected officials. And you know, tonight I will say this, I think three minutes was a little too short in a few instances.
Yes.
I do. I think four minutes. I'm just saying, I know Rosie's not going to be happy with me, but I've noticed every speaker up here was almost about to be over three minutes. And they had important things to say at the end of that three minutes. Now, listen, I don't think everybody should come up here and speak for five minutes, but I think maybe like 3:00 to 3:30, 3:45. I think people have important, they've been listening to us for five hours. The last thing I will say is I do think that as far as the false accusations from certain individuals to police reports, I think it's really, really important that we take it very seriously. Our police officers are our most valuable asset in keeping our community safe. And every minute we waste of their time is time that could be spent helping someone who has another really, really important and serious issue. So if those accusations are false, then I think that we should all hold those individuals responsible. And as someone said tonight, it's a really, really big deal. People should feel safe to call the police, but they should not feel safe to file false police reports. That's not okay. It's not okay. Yep. I think that's, oh, I have one other thing. If you notice, the Union County meeting recently, I had to Oprah the resolutions to get them or Rosie had to help me, but there was a resolution by, why I have to Oprah things as an elected official is sometimes peculiar. I feel as though they were passed at the county and I should be able to just ask for them. So it took seven or so days to actually get the resolution. So I got my Oprah request tonight while I was sitting in closed session. And because, you know, there's a lot of money that Union County is getting in bridge repair. And there was, I wanted to know what bridges are getting repaired. I want to see the details because they weren't in the packet. And I'm not trying to blow up my Union County buddies because they're actually, we're working well together. But I will say that the other thing that was in the meeting last week was the county received $2.1 million for the Senior Citizens and Disabled Residents Transportation Assistance Program. I want to know how much Summit's getting, if we can get money through Sage, if we can get money. I just want to know the details. I want to learn. At the last meeting, they also passed a resolution, was it a resolution, Rosie, or an ordinance?
Resolution.
Resolution regarding the Salt Brook. We now have their commitment to fix their portion of the Salt Brook. But, you know, I wanted it in writing. I want that on record. And tonight I'm going to submit that to Rosie. So in three or four years, when I'm not up here, somebody can say, you know, "I remember she pulled out that resolution." And we're going to hold the county accountable for that. I'm hoping it gets fixed this year. So I'm hoping that's not the case. But, you know, I would encourage all of you just to pay attention to what's going on in the county. These are your tax dollars, right? And let's hold everybody accountable and work with them so that you get the most from your tax dollars. Those meetings are tough to watch because they're fuzzy and they're grainy. You just can't really understand what's going on. But I think we've done a nice job working with the county, and I appreciate that our resolution that we had on June 16th, 2025, went back to the county and they responded. And I appreciate that. And that's good for our residents. That's all. I'm so sorry I talked so long. It was just a long night.
Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Boyer, yes?
Just one statement. I just want to say on record that I want to thank Union County for all of their support to the city of Summit. I appreciate everything that they have done with the Bryant Pond and things that they will do in the future. Very supportive of the county. We need their help on a bunch of things, and I look forward to partnering with them and working with them. So I just want to make that statement. Thank you, Council President.
You're very welcome. Other comments? All right, I'm going to try and wrap up relatively quickly. I've got a couple of things to talk about. One is I think everyone who has been paying attention when they see their monthly electric bill has been shocked about how much it's gone up over the past several months. And there's lots of finger pointing on who's to blame, but it's up. They've been up a lot. I want to congratulate Councilman Smallwood. He got us involved in this electricity aggregation, and we just found out that we had a successful bid through them where if all things go to plan, I think the number is we can have our residents who are, all Summit residents who qualify, which is the vast, vast majority, will see their electricity bills go down 7%. That's a big, big deal, and I want to congratulate Councilman Smallwood around that. That's going to, that person's coming in. I think we're going to have them give a whole procedure on how it'll work at our next council meeting. So that's a huge thing. Dog park. Is the dog park at the dump just done? My wife goes there all the time and she's like, she likes to go to the book place. She likes to exchange the books. She dumps, she likes to get rid of garbage. And then she brings our dogs and runs around the dog park and she says it looks a little bit like a disaster. Are we, are we moved?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that it was a disaster, and I think that the dogs are perfectly happy there. Maybe they have lower standards than the rest of us do. But there are a lot of challenges. There are a lot of challenges with the dog park at the dump. It's never open on Sunday. It's only open two Saturdays a month because when the free market is open, the dog park is closed so that they can have the parking. And it closes at 3:45 every other day. Now, I spent a lot of time at that dog park before the other dog parks opened on Saturdays, and I never saw anybody there. Like, the most I ever saw were two or three other dogs. And now I've been spending a lot of time at the dog parks uptown, and they love it. People come after work.
Your point is fair. My wife says she's usually the only one there when she goes, but she likes it.
So, listen.
I had to ask on her behalf.
I thought it was a bad location from the beginning and that we spent $50,000 on it. I wish we could get that back and spend it someplace else for a different location for the dog park. I don't know if we can repurpose any of those materials, but I think that that location is, I mean, we can't, we can't, we don't need to change it. Some people can still go there, but the other ones are far better attended.
We've been to those two.
Council President, could I just add something to that? I think more importantly, you know, it's not getting the use that it should. But more importantly, it's actually honoring a former council member.
I know. Councilman Gould. And he was a huge proponent of this, and I just hate to see it kind of.
Well, I think that's another reason that it's, doing these temporary dog parks have been so successful that we should make them permanent. And I think we should actually, whether it's the Village Green or Memorial, rename one of those parks where it's an actual park, where it's more visible, to really honor former Councilman Matt Gould.
Good comment. As far as a comment around, you know, going to the police, obviously, people should feel free to go to the police. I think Councilwoman Hamlet articulated very well what the nuances around that are, so I applaud her for saying that. I do think, I feel sorry that you two, Ms. Kramer and Mr. Anonymous, went through that. No one should have to go through that. It was sad. But I do want to applaud our police department, who, as I knew they would, was very professional in how they handled the situation there. People should feel, as I mentioned, they should go to police. They should call the police when they have issues. Summit is, we work very, very hard up here to make Summit a safe community. And so we take that very, very seriously. But we do have scarce resources. Our police are stretched thin, even though we've added police officers, particularly at night. We have four police patrolling, usually something like that, maybe.
We don't want to discuss it.
Yeah, we don't want to discuss it. So I'm giving out too much. But we have plenty. But my point is.
We have a whole team of them.
My point is, no one has unlimited resources, so we should use them wisely. As far as Oprah-ing police records, you can't have it both ways. We get Oprah-ed all the time. Government is made to be Oprah-ed. It's a Freedom of Information Act, and we work for the community, our citizens. The police work for our citizens. And if a citizen wants to look at something, they have every right to look at it, and you can't restrict it in any way, shape, or form. Particularly, I know with the police, it's a social justice issue. It's a safety issue. There's lots of reasons why information like that is Oprah-able. And so I think that that is a bad idea.
Council President, the Supreme Court of New Jersey has said that all body cam footage is Oprah-able.
Exactly. And there's a reason for it, and I think there's a very good reason for it. Police Athletic League, there was a golf outing last week that I think a lot of council members came to. Councilman Smallwood did real yeoman's work on this. I am a Police Athletic League alum, was president a long, long time ago. Many of the alums got together, I see one in the audience here, to really revitalize this golf outing. And we honored Coach Davidson, who was, you know, the second-winningest coach, I think, in New Jersey. He's a legend in the game, and it was a really, really cool event. So many people in the community came out for it, and they raised a lot of money, money which will get put back into engaging children with our police officers in a way that's open and friendly and that they can understand that their police are there to help them and in a way that they feel comfortable going to them. So it's a great organization. I want to applaud Councilman Smallwood for really driving that to get that golf outing going again. It was really, really good. The last thing I'm going to say, I've gotten several calls, and the first one, I'm like, "Come on, this is real." I keep getting calls that people are confused on how the school budget works. I kid you not. I wish I could go back in time to the Candidates Forum, whenever you guys had that in September or whatever, and put in a question, "Please explain to the public that you know how the school budget process works." Because it's pretty clear that there's a lot of misinformation that's floating around around how it works. The, I've been asked multiple times, "Does the council control who works at the schools? And what teachers get hired? Or where the summer programs go to?" And I'm just going to unequivocally say, "We don't have anything to do with line item issues on the school budget." If people are telling you that, I'm going to say it in a nice way, they are fibbing. They are spreading misinformation. That's my nice way of saying it. What the Board of School Estimates does, which I think the mayor, Councilman Smallwood, and Councilwoman Hamlet were on, they provide oversight to the school budget process. The school budget, just to reiterate, they came with a proposal for a nine, basically a 9% increase for your taxes. The school board, which was appointed by the former mayor, the majority, sat at the meetings and nodded their heads and said nothing. And they agreed to a 9% budget that would have raised everyone's taxes on average by $1,000. There was no questioning on why, what were you doing? It just was. The Board of School Estimates did their job, in my opinion, and pushed back on it and said, "Why? We've been running, we have an excellent school system in our community. It is one of the gems of our town. It's why people, one of the reasons people move here." We have been able to do that for 10, 20 years, keeping the school budget under the 2% cap. It's doable if you plan and you have foresight and you budget ahead, which is clearly something that the school board hadn't been doing because they ran off a fiscal cliff. And no one on that board provided oversight to it. So sadly, the Board of School Estimates had to push back and said, "Sharpen your pencils, and you need to reduce your ask. It's not fair to the community what you're asking them to do." It's possible to have an excellent school system if you prioritize what you're willing to spend. They didn't tell them who to cut or what money to cut. That's not their job. It's the business administrator at the Board of Ed, along with the Board of Education members. And they went back and they did it. They are best capable of doing that. If you want to blame anyone for why, I don't know, someone said the summer school program was cut, the thing you should blame is the Board of Ed members who for years sat there and provided no oversight and let the situation get out of control. So the process worked, and I'm super happy that these guys pushed back on it. Honestly, I think the budget was still too high at 3.95%, but I get it. They dug themselves a hole that was almost inescapable, and I give them credit for figuring out a way to lessen the impact on taxpayers while still providing excellent education for our children. But again, I can't believe I'm actually having to waste everyone's time talking about this because people are just spreading misinformation around this. It's insane. It's insane. Just be honest with people around how things work. It's better for our community. It's better than, I don't want people to be confused and go to the wrong people because we don't, we don't hire teachers. We don't. The school board does. So that's my plea. If you hear stuff like that, push back and say, "No, I know you're not completely being honest with me." Another nice way to say it, okay? When you hear that happen. And that's it.
Council President, I'd like to increase my percentage to 96% and make a motion to adjourn.
So will you.
All in favor? opposed? All right, we are adjourned. All right, we are adjourned.